Good evening and welcome to the December 4th, 2025 meeting of the Town of Southampton Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held live and also via video conferencing on the town's website. For those of you online who wish to view tonight's live meeting only and not participate, please do not join the Zoom meeting. If you're having difficulties accessing the hearing in either case, visit the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal and click on the Instructions link. With that, I'd ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you're here with us tonight, please silence your cellphones and refrain from speaking to one another as it interferes with the recording of our proceedings. In case of an emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Do not attempt to use the elevators during the emergency evacuation. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator. Restrooms are located across the hall from this room. Tonight, Board Member Helen Burgess is participating via Zoom. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, state their name and address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the Board. In order to consider properly every application before us tonight, individuals commenting on a particular application have a time limit of three minutes. I want to emphasize that we welcome comments but must adhere to a time limit in order to accommodate all interested in speaking on any application this evening. Written comments on any application are also welcome. Please address these comments to the members of the Board and send via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall to the Board Secretary Candace Cowell in the Building Department. At this time, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of our November 20th, 2025 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, John, would you take us through the agenda, please?
Okay, number one on the agenda, EJST LLC 292 Little Fresh Pond Road, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-97-3-7. The hearing on this, this application will be re-advertised for December 18th. Turning to number 11 on the agenda, application of 94 Dune Road Holding Corp., 94 Dune Road, East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-385-1-37.3. I move to adjourn the hearing on this application to April 2nd.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
The decision on the application of 162 Jobbs Lane LLC, 321 Rose Hill Road, Water Mill, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-115-3-14.3. The decision on this application will be adjourned to December 18th. Or, I move to adjourn the decision on this application to December 18th, sorry.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Decision in the application of Not What We Do LLC, 471 County Road, 39 Tuckahoe, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-158-1-29. I move to reopen the hearing on this application.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I move to close the hearing on the application of Not What We Do LLC for a decision later tonight.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
The decision in the application of Danilis Realty 2 LLC, 10 Schwank's Road, Water Mill, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-113-1-8. I move to reopen the hearing on this application.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I move to close the app, the hearing on the application of Danilis Realty 2 LLC for a decision later tonight.
Aye, second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
The decision in the application of Jason Flom, 15 Bay Street, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-57-1-21. I move to adjourn the decision on this application to December 18th.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
The decision in the application of Charles Calisa and Maribeth Costa Calisa, 29 Poplar Street, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-5-5-53. I move to reopen the hearing on this application.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Just try to mix it up a little.
I move to close the application, the hearing on the application for Charles Calisa and Maribeth Costa Calisa for a decision later tonight.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
The decision in the application of Bart Carfarella, 17 Dock Road, Remsenburg, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-366-1-10. I move to adjourn the decision on this application to December 18th.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
The decision in the application of Anthony Adino and Rosemary Adino, 14 Port Elizabeth Drive, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-345-1-2.1. I move to reopen the hearing on this application.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I move to close the hearing on the application of Anthony Adino and Rosemary Adino for decision later tonight.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Turning to the top of the agenda, number two on the agenda, the application of Michael W. Sonnenfeld, 1135 Meecocks Road, Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-134-2-25.2. Applicant requests relief from Town Code Section 330-115C continuance for a principal rear yard setback from 41.5 feet to 37 points, 30, 13.7 feet for a proposed covered patio addition to a new dwelling on a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction. Daphne, let me swear you in since this is a new, I swear tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
You state your name and address.
Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning, 4 Happy Acres Drive, Shirley.
Okay, so tell us about this.
So, the proposed project is comprised of construction of a proposed roof overhang over a covered patio, covered patio with dimensions of 5.2 feet by 21.1 feet, located in the northwest corner of a new residence currently under construction, subject property which is located on the southwest corner of Meecocks Road and Ocean Road in Bridgehampton. The lot is zoned R80 and is non-conforming at 62,753 square feet. It's also encumbered by freshwater wetlands comprised of a dug pond that takes in the majority of the east side of the property. The lot is regulated by the Town Conservation Board, NDC, and has received approval for the project, which included the requirement of 75-foot wide vegetated non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer, taking in additional property. It's all depicted on the survey. So, the currently proposed roof overhang over a patio is located within the footprint of a previously approved areaway or light well that was approved in a variance decision D025036 issued on April 3rd by this board. The change was noted in a submission to the Building Department during their review of the application for the new residence by a letter from Christian Estrada dated July 9th. The, a building permit was issued for the original approved variance version of the house without this overhang on July, where is that, 25th? So, construction very recently began. They've dug a hole for the foundation and I believe that they're getting ready to pour it. So, the reason for the proposed change is to cover a side door that was always on the plans. They had an areaway that ran the whole side of the house for light into the basement. They changed the basement plan that it did not require light in the one side and they preferred to have, instead of a bridge going over the areaway from this door, they wanted to just continue an existing porch that's on the Meecocks Lane side of the house around the corner of the house. So, it meets the exact same footprint of the areaway that was previously granted. It's the exact same setback of the 13.7 feet requiring a variance from 115C because it's non-conforming lot. But it's basically an A grade patio with a roof overhang. We thought that this might qualify as a modification to the variance and not a new variance, but because the original variance did not approve a roof overhang in any capacity, we were told this had to be a new variance. But ultimately, it's the same area, same setback, just not a hole in the ground. It's a roof over a door that was always proposed.
Okay.
Everything else remains the same. There's no other.
Great. We had extensive discussions about this application in the past and we had some concerns about the deer fence, which is going to come down before you get a C of O.
Correct.
And things like that. I don't, I personally don't see a problem. You're saying that this is exactly fits what the setback was.
Yep.
For the footprint of the, of the house and this is just providing an overhang.
Yes.
And it's, it backs up to property, the, its rear yard is, really backs up to another piece of property.
Yes.
Okay.
So, it's also in the family.
I know, it's, it's a compound over there, yeah, right. Does anybody have any questions? Are there any questions in the audience on 1135 Meecocks Road?
Daphne, do we need like a modification from Conservation Board? I mean, you have, I don't have any idea.
Um, maybe, I don't know if they, as far as the setbacks, the porch was part of their approval, I don't know that it matters if it's bigger or smaller.
Usually we refer things and I just was like, if it's not going to get, there's no modification necessary.
Everything that's on the, the plan was approved, they may just be slightly smaller.
Do you need to check on it? You need to check on it perhaps so that you don't get caught? I don't know. What do you suggest, Katie?
I'll find out. You know, I don't want to re-refer it to Marty to have to wait for three months if it's, you know, he'd be like, I don't need it. I'll ask Marty.
All right.
Just remind me next week.
I will, I will. I'm writing it down.
Okay. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 1135 Meecocks Road?
No one.
Okay, John, this is yours.
Okay, so I move to close the public hearing on this application. Leave it open for written submissions to December 19th with a decision on January 15th.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, yeah.
Thank you.
The 15th of January.
Thank you.
It's our first meeting in January, if you can believe it, so, okay.
Who's here?
Number three on the agenda, the application of John Abreu and Gazala Abreu, 7 Wild Duck Lane, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-125-1-28.3 pursuant to Town Code Section 330-165A, appeals on interpretation of zoning law and map. The applicants appeal the determination of the building inspector dated November 4, 2024 that the R40 zoning district regulations apply to the subject property.
The Board has jurisdiction.
Hi, are either of you attorneys?
No.
Okay, let me swear you in. Do you swear tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please individually state your name and address.
Kei Zha, Mobulai, 15145, 4 North Sea Road.
Kei, how do you spell your first name?
K-E-I-Z-H-A.
Okay.
And Mark Schiffer, my office address is 53 Hill Street, Southampton, New York.
Okay. Who is making the presentation?
Well, both do, but I'll start.
Okay.
So, this is an application for Dr. Abreu who wants to do a little expansion on his house and we, the lot is part of a subdivision that was approved a year back in, in the 19, well, not that, that long ago, but that subdivision, the subdivision map on the, on the submission showed that it was subdivided into an R20 zoning. And when we prepared all the plans, we assumed an R20 zoning as per the subdivision approval, the initial subdivision approval. And the Building Department questioned it, they said the lot is 44,000 square feet and the existing zone at this time is an R40. So, we should use the set, they wanted a determination from the ZBA whether we should use an R20 setbacks or the R40 setbacks. My experience is that when it's, when a subdivision is approved based on a certain type of zoning, this goes, runs with the land and that this property should be subject to an R20 zone. So, this is basically the application that we're presenting in front of you.
So, when you say it was approved, the subdivision was approved through the Planning Department as an R20 zone?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a very simple case. The conforming lot under today's zoning is not eligible for the zoning at the time the lot was created for a subdivision unless you were talking about a cluster plan in which the Planning Board said these lots are subject to R20. But the code is very, very clear. This, this is a conforming lot in R40. By this logic, we'd have a lot of subdivisions happening in this town under previous zoning designation. So, I think this is a very, very easy application. It's not eligible for R20.
So, you're basically saying that even though the subdivision was R20 when it was done, because it now meets the, it.
It was upzoned.
The whole, the whole thing is.
The area was upzoned and.
The whole area, not just this.
Not just this piece.
Okay.
And if, if lots in that subdivision, subdivision map would fall below the 40,000 square feet and became non-conforming, you know, there would be a different set of circumstances because the code accounts for that.
So, it was upzoned after planning approved, this subdivision with an R20 zone?
Okay.
So, it was approved, it was approved and then it was upzoned.
And then it was upzoned. And if you, if you only had 20,000 square feet after it got upzoned, then you'd be qualified as a non.
It was something less, non-conforming.
But now, but because you have over 40,000, that you're, you don't qualify as a non-conforming in the upzoned area.
Okay, so, obviously, that's why we're here, you know, we like.
Okay, yeah, you want some clarification, yeah.
I have been doing this for a few years also, you know, so, so I understand the argument here, but I respectfully disagree with that argument.
What's that argument? It's the Town Code.
No, I think that once, once a subdivision is approved under a certain zone, that zone, this is how other houses are built.
No, 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 Mark, that's not right. That's not right.
Kind of pre-existing non-conforming, it's.
May I finish?
Yes, go ahead, finish.
No, thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, in this case, I think that once a subdivision is approved under a certain zone, this runs with the land and it goes, and this is how, you know, other houses have been built using the art, in that subdivision, using the R20 zone. In this case, that house was located initially in the center of the lot, so that was never an issue. The second point that I would like to bring up to this, to the Board, is that this is sort of an interior lot that has a substantial driveway, there's a substantial portion of the lot which is a driveway. And this is why that lot exceeds the 40,000 square foot area. But without the driveway, it would not exceed the 40,000 square feet and it would not be conforming to the R40.
But the Town Code does not define the lot area excluding the flag strip. So, your lot area is, look, the, the building inspector has determined this is a conforming lot and I'm going to stand by what I'm saying, it's not eligible for the relief in that section.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Schiffer, do you have any authority in the code which would support your claim that the R20 designation runs with the land once the Planning Department has determined that?
So, I'd like an opportunity to, to do this research, but I respectfully, I understand your, the argument here, but I, you know, I don't think so, I think that, you know.
Well, you came forward to try to, you know, make your case.
Yes, I think that, but I would like to have an opportunity.
Well, you can.
I think, I was not expecting, actually, I was, I also thought it was a pretty straightforward application where I thought it was going to be, just going to get approved without any question because, you know, I've been doing, when a subdivision is approved under a certain zoning, normally it typically runs with the.
Then it got upzoned.
Right, but it got upzoned afterward.
Yes, that's true and that's what happens.
I think it's fair to give Mr. Schifferd an opportunity to support his, his claim. I think he's, he seems like he wasn't prepared for this.
I agree, I agree.
This little wrinkle and.
I was not present also such, those, these arguments.
Okay. Well, of course, you came forward and that's, you know, and that's fair. So, do you, so is your feeling you would like to adjourn this or do you want to submit written?
Well, I'd like to have an opportunity to submit a written.
And, and you wanted German to come back to make your, make your case?
We're only going to take a minute short, but make the argument that really, because all the properties, you see here, there's, we have two arguments. One is the driveway and two, the fact that the other properties in that same subdivisions have been, they are, have been improved according to the R20 zone. So, we are singled out, we are singling out an owner.
What sizes were those two lots you're talking about?
Sorry?
What size were the two lots?
No, there are, no, there are more than two lots, one, two, three, four lots.
You said two were approved with the R20 zoning.
No, no, I didn't say, I said other lots, the, the four lots were approved under the R20 zoning.
What size were those lots, though?
No, the subdivision was, the subdivision was approved under the R20 zoning.
Right.
And, and to be fair, it also is because the subdivision was about the same time that the upzone was happening. And so, the Planning Board, you know, even though they made their application when it was R20, they knew that it was going to be upzoned and that's why all of these lots are 40,000 square feet. So, Mark, when you look, when you do your research, you need to look at 330-115?
Yes.
Because that's a section, and literally, the introductory language is that they have, they have to be non-conforming.
Right.
That whole section talks about if you're a non-conforming lot, then you get this and you're not a non, I mean, that's, you're not a non-conforming lot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but, okay.
I'm just saying, look at that section.
No, I understand, I understand exactly.
John, this is your application, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, it's pretty much given the opportunity to do the, do some work on it.
Now, the question becomes, we don't really have space for additional adjournments until February, so would you like to adjourn the case to February or would you prefer to close it, allow, provide us with a written submission and then get a decision up or down one way or another without coming back?
No, I trust that the Commission is going to be fair and looked at my argument.
Okay.
And, and what we're going to present, so I'd like to be able to submit it in the next two weeks and then I'd like all the Commissioners to please really look at our perspective. You know, I understand, I don't, I don't think it's a black and white type of situation. I thought it was a black and white in terms of Mr. Abreu's position that once it's approved in a certain way, that's where it goes and if there's any upzoning later, it doesn't.
So, you would be okay with providing a written submission by the 19th of December?
Yes.
But, so are you, you willing to close it and provide the written, the written comments by the 19th and then we'll consider it for?
An up or down vote on, on, on your submission.
Before we do that, we need to ask, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on 7 Wild Duck Lane? Okay, we have a couple of people who wish to be heard. Okay, you can come up. I guess you better come up here because we don't have, we don't have a mic at the podium. Here, okay.
Thanks.
Who gets up for the record?
Okay.
I like where you're wearing your name tag.
I am.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Taylor Gonzalez with the law firm Frichelli Deegan, Tarana, 333 Earl Obington Boulevard, Union Down, New York.
Okay.
It's Taylor Gonzalez, right?
Yes.
Taylor or Taylor?
Taylor.
Okay, Taylor, give us your comments.
So, I'm here on behalf of Ginger Seket and Ben Shap, who are the abutting owners at 5 Whipple Warwell, Whipplewell Lane. I'd first like to point out that the majority of the homes in the neighborhood are zoned R40 and as can be seen on the Town of Southampton zoning map, which I provided, the property and all surrounding properties were zoned R40 when the map copyrighted as of 2025 were published. We have the full map and then a zoomed-in version where you can better see the two properties. Unless a change of zone has been granted by the Town Board since this map was published, this should accurately reflect the applicant's property's zoning district. While it's possible, previously, the lot was zoned R20 as reflected on the 1983 zoning map, subdivision map. The town has the ability and clearly used the ability on its own motion to amend the zoning classification. Based on all information I have obtained from the town through FOIL requests, public The town has the ability, and clearly use the ability, on its own motion to amend the zoning classification. Based on all information I have obtained from the town through FOIL requests, public information, and the applicant's own zoning board of appeals application, as of today, the lot is zoned R forty and has not been rezoned. Seven Wild Duck, as pointed out within the denial letter dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, complies with the required lot area and lot width of the R forty zoning district. I'd also like to point out that the present request to recognize the applicant's property as R twenty, also, they may benefit from the reduced setbacks, is not in front of the proper board pursuant to Town of Southampton Code Section three thirty dash one eighty-five. The town board is the only board who are allowed to review any change of zone requests. With that, I'd like to respectfully request that the board uphold the determination of the building inspector that the lot is zoned R forty.
Okay, thank you, Taylor.
May I respond?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments. I think that those comments are really inaccurate. I'm sorry to say that bluntly, but the map that was approved in nineteen eighty-three for the subdivision, first of all, I would like to point out that this lady represents somebody who is outside of that subdivision. So in a sense, although I appreciate your comments as a, as a Southampton town resident, it's not really part of this subdivision, those lots. We are here talking about a subdivision that was approved in nineteen eighty-three that consists of four lots, and that subdivision clearly stays R twenty. I think that this board, the ZBA, has, the purpose of this board of the ZBA is to clarify any disagreement that we may have with the building inspector as to determination regarding the zoning, and this is what we have here. So I think this is, we are absolutely in front of the proper board to, to review this application.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Please come up. Sorry, we usually have a thing at the podium, but I don't know why it's missing. You're not.
No.
So let me swear you in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Barbara Burns, eleven Ravens Nest. My house backyard and John's backyard are joined.
You're adjacent, yeah, probably okay.
I, I applied for a, I bought the property in eighty-six, applied for a garage in two thousand and four. It was denied because it was eighteen feet. They said you're R forty. I don't know what he's looking at, but my survey's from eighty-six, and it says forty.
Okay. All right, thank you. He's going to have to present information to us, and we're gonna consider it, but I think you heard that, you know, that there's a fairly strong opinion that, in fact, it's R forty.
Yeah.
At this point. We will consider it, though, clearly.
Let me respond to this, this very nice lady here who came forward speaking. Your property is, is not within that subdivision. So anything else around that property, around that subdivision, is definitely R forty. So you were unquestionably R forty. Here, we are dealing with a lot that is part of a four-lot subdivision that was approved in nineteen eighty-three under an R twenty zone. So yes, there are borders, yes, you are adjacent to that lot, however, your lot is definitely an R forty.
Okay.
You understand, this is part of a subdivision.
And when you bought the property in two thousand and twenty-one, your survey said R forty?
No, I'm sorry, no, it didn't.
It didn't say that?
No, no, contrary, as, as a matter of fact, when we initially.
Did you get a new survey when you bought the property?
As part of the, the submission, when we initially came, we discussed it with the building department, and we, we discussed with Molly Shea also for the, because they were, the proximity to the wetlands, and we have in his, in his own writing, R twenty. It was deemed to be an R twenty. This subdivision is an R twenty subdivision. It would be a first that, you know, I've been practicing for the last four years, that a subdivision suddenly that, that's approved under one zone gets suddenly upzoned.
No, no, no.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Mark, that's not correct. That's factually incorrect. Everything you're saying is wrong, one hundred percent wrong.
Maybe I.
You're one hundred percent wrong.
Okay, but, but let's not go there. We've already made that argument.
Twenty-seven years.
Yeah, no, I know, I, please. You've already made that argument.
That means he'd be able to subdivide his property under R twenty zoning? No.
Okay, wait, look, I think we, I think, John, if I may, you know what you have to do. You have to submit to us by, when was it, January nineteenth?
December nineteenth.
I'm sorry, December nineteenth, written comments, and we will make a decision subsequently on January fifteenth. All right, so, John, that was, you want to make that?
You still need to see if anyone online.
I just wanna see if there's anybody online. Is anybody on Zoom who wishes to, oh, wait, one more? I'm sorry, please come up. I'm sorry.
We're spiraling out of control. Thank you, Mark.
Are you an attorney?
Eh, no, I'm a neighbor of.
Okay, can let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Monique Arroblez-Rey, thirty Whipple Warwell.
Thirty Whipple Warwell, okay. So Monique, right?
Yes.
Okay, Monique, you want to tell us what, what your comments are?
It's just, all the neighborhood is the same. We are all under the same zoning ru, rules, and I would be very, very affected, because we, sorry, I'm very nervous.
Don't worry about it.
Don't be nervous.
No, we share the, the property line at the back of our home, and it's not just the zoning, it's the pyramid law, like the proposal I've seen is not what you see in the neighborhood, is not conforming with any rule.
Okay, but we're not looking actually at that.
At the proposal, just the zoning.
We're looking at the question of what, what zone applies to this property, and that's what we're gonna, we're gonna opine on. So don't worry, you know, we're not, we're not approving setbacks and pyramid or anything like that, we're just looking at the zone.
So, yeah, we are all in the same zone, so I don't find any reason.
Okay, and you can make your same point, but it's, she's not in the subdivision, but that's the whole question of upzoning, so.
Yes.
All right, you know what you have to do. Thank you very much, Monique.
I'd like also for the record, make again the, the same comment that, I appreciate that, your objection, but you are not within this subdivision of those four lots that was clearly approved under the R twenty zone, and.
In nineteen eighty-three and upzoned subsequently.
Right, but, hold on, but just to be clear, that the question really is whether that subdivision is an island unto itself or part of everything else. So everyone around you can opine as to whether or not the subdivision is, it's a self-contained thing in the R twenty zone, or whether it is also R forty, so.
No, I appreciate that.
She can, she can opine on that.
I think that it's.
Okay, let me just see if there's anybody else in the audience? Did I miss anybody? Okay, is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application?
There's one person.
Okay.
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can't see you yet.
I'm in a cop, so, yep.
Hi, are you an attorney?
No, I'm not.
All right, let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Gendrick Zitek, five Whipple Warwell Lane, directly adjacent property.
Okay. So tell us your comments, please.
So I'm represented by Taylor Gonzalez, our lawyer, but I want to make my point directly as well, on behalf of me and my husband, Benjamin Shaw. First, I want to state that when, in the last forty-eight months, there were two other improvements happening on our, our side on North Shore Road, we did not protest neither of those two improvements, because they were minor, and the two neighbors approached us to discuss. What happened here is that we were informed about this change three days, only three days, before the October meeting. I then called Mr. Schiford, and I requested the plans which were not included in that notification. Afterwards, I also spoke to Mr. Abroom himself. During both discussions, and the board has now witnessed this, there were incorrect statements made. Secondly, multiple times on the call with Mr. Abroom, he stated, and I quote, "He does not see how the proposed multiple structures on the property, including a three-car garage with an apartment on top, nine feet from my property line, impacts any of the neighbors." I repeat, he said he doesn't see how it impacts anybody. This is where my and my husband's kids play, and it would impact directly our privacy of our property. Mr. Abroom also, when I said that I'm going to oppose, and I feel so concerned that I have to bring in a lawyer, that he can build even something worse.
Okay.
So I just wanted to state how I'm concerned about while he states this is a minor improvement, which is one bedroom and a garage, this is in fact a three-car compound with, with an apartment on top.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I know, but I'm, I'm a neighboring property, and I'm really concerned.
I understand that you have a concern. We're not dealing with the actual structures at this meeting, we're dealing with whether he can claim the R twenty, you know, setbacks and everything else, or he is required to meet the R forty.
I understand, and we understand that.
And that's the only question that we're dealing with at this point. If, if in fact, he has to meet the R forty and he wants a variance, he has to come back. I mean, that's the way it goes. Okay.
We are new today, so I just wanted to share my concerns, and I understand the R forty, R twenty.
Thank you very much.
I would like just for the.
Okay, but then we're gonna cut it short, okay.
I would just like for the record, we'd like to ask this board to disregard the comment of this gentleman regarding my client, John Abroom. John Abroom is a very, very.
All right, we, we're, we're not dealing with it now. We're, we're not, you know, I appreciate that.
Exactly what.
Okay.
We don't, we don't think about that stuff.
We're not, we're not, you know.
Are we in R twenty, or are we in R?
In one year now.
It's really a question of law.
Exactly.
Yes.
That's all it is. It's not a question of fact, it's a question of law.
Okay, so, John, you want to make a motion?
All right, well, so we're gonna close the hearing.
Right.
And open for written subs for twelve nineteen.
Right.
And a decision for one fifteen.
Second.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonio.
Aye.
Chair of both sides, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a good holiday.
Number four on the agenda, application of Diamond Development Properties, seventy-one Ridge Road, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash sixteen dash two dash nine. On June sixth, two thousand twenty-four, by decision number D zero two four oh five six, this board found the subject premises to be held in single and separate ownership from all adjacent parcels with the condition that the ownership of the lots be separated with the six months, within six months of said decision. On November fourteen, two thousand twenty-five, this board received a letter from Rebecca Sapeda requesting that said decision be amended to extend the time period to separate the lots into separate ownership.
The board has your session.
Okay, have I ever sworn either of you in?
In the past, yes.
And, so I did.
No, but this, no.
This is new.
This is new, yes.
All right, that's right.
I mean, it's a modification, but it's a new hearing.
Okay, so because it's a modification, I have to swear you in again, are either of you attorneys?
No.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Okay, please individually state your names.
My name is Cameron Gazvin.
Okay, Cameron, and?
Rebecca Sapeda.
Okay, Rebecca.
Cameron, can you spell your last name?
G H A Z V I N I.
Okay, who's starting us off? Okay, Rebecca.
So there was a decision made on June sixth, two thousand twenty-four, where this town deemed that it was single and separate. There was a six-month period where the deeds had to be switched into separate ownerships, because they were in common ownerships, and when the lots were gonna be improved in June two thousand twenty-four, that's when I had realized that it exceeded the six-month approval.
Okay.
So we're requesting an extended time period for the change, because I did switch the deeds in June third of this year, so that was six months after the six-month approval.
So June third of two thousand twenty-five, you did, you did separate the ownership.
Now it's separate ownership.
Yeah, now it's separate.
Same dimensions, same surveys, same everything.
Yeah, everything stayed the same, nothing was improved yet, so.
Okay. Julie, this is yours.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions. It seems to make sense to me what you're requesting.
I think we, we all agree that. I mean, I don't know, John, do you have anything?
Oh, no, the only thing I would say is I'm very sorry to hear about your father's plea.
Oh, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, so that was what was happening in the course of the six months, yes.
Things happen, life intervenes sometimes, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on one fifty-one Church?
No.
Not, I'm sorry, on seventy-one Ridge Road, New York. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard?
No.
Okay, Julie, this is yours.
So we are going to close the public hearing, keep it open for written submissions until December nineteenth, with a decision for January fifteen.
Right.
December, did you say fifteen or nineteen?
Nineteen, she said nineteen, yeah.
Second.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonio. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Rebecca.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair of both sides. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Where do we submit the affidavit?
I'll take it.
Okay.
Thank you for much.
Thank you.
Have a happy holiday, thank you.
Thank you.
Number five on the agenda, application of Piervincenzo Russo, one fifty-one Church
Lane, Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash eighty-six dash four dash seven point one.
You've been, you're, you're an attorney, and you recognize, but just state your name and address again.
Oh, yes. Denise Sharn from the Adam Miller Group, two four six two Main Street in Bridgehampton for the applicant.
Okay, Denise.
We were here last, at your last meeting, and there was some additional information requested, which we were able to submit in a timely fashion. The findings and determination of the zoning board determination that was issued was requested, we've submitted that to the file. That was an eight hundred and four square foot cubic, cubic foot, I'm sorry, variance that was issued in May of two thousand one. And the other set of information that you were looking for was the pre-existing nonconformity that existed on the property without any variances, and then the amount of variance that was issued, and then what's proposed tonight. So on the easterly side, the pre-existing nonconforming part of the structure is eight hundred and eighty-three cubic feet, with a proposed variance for this evening of two hundred and five cubic feet. And on the westerly side, we have pre-existing five hundred and fifty-nine cubic feet, pre-existing by variance, eight hundred and four cubic feet, and currently proposed tonight is six point four cubic feet. Just as a reminder, this is for a three hundred and twenty-six square foot second-story addition, and also a roof dot deck off the back of the house.
Okay. It was very clear for the presentation in the letter.
Thank you very much for providing that information, that was very helpful.
I think it's helpful for the file.
Yeah.
As well. Are there any questions from the board on this?
No.
John, you?
No, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on one fifty-one Church Street? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on one fifty-one Church Street?
No one.
Okay, John, this is yours.
Okay, I would like to close the public hearing on this application, hold it open for written submissions to December nineteenth, with a written decision on January fifteenth.
Second. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonio.
All right.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Ms. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair of both sides, thank you very much, Denise.
Thank you, Michelle.
Nicely presented.
Number six on the agenda, application of Nineteen Bay Drive LLC, Nineteen Bay Drive, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash two six nine dash one dash forty-six.
Recused?
Yes.
I'm recused.
All right, Helen is recused from this. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you have one more?
Yes.
Yep. Has to be full-size, if you want a full-size.
Oh, Candace is gonna want a full-size, I'll take the full-size instead.
Okay, you want this instead of the other, or you want both? I, I did leave one at the desk as well.
Oh, all right, then that one's fine.
Okay.
No, you keep that, and if you want to show the board.
Okay.
All right, so you did swear you in because you were on Zoom, correct?
Yes.
Just restate your names and.
Rocco Latiri.
I'm sorry, what?
Rocco Latiri. Sorry about my voice.
L A T E R I.
L E T T.
L E T T.
I E R I.
No, we didn't, we have a.
Be fancy, nice.
We're done, if you need a report.
No, no, we don't need it now, we have the, the little ones. Good evening, members of the board.
Just say your name and address.
Vlahadamas Law, P L L C, by James Vlahadamas.
It's a lot tougher than mine.
Yes, one forty-eight East Montreux Highway, Suite Three, Hampton Bay, New York, one one nine four six, attorney for the applicant, Nineteen Bay Drive LLC.
Um, so.
So let's summarize, when, last you were here on Zoom, we had discussed a couple of things that needed to be provided.
A lot of clarity that we need to take care of.
We need a lot of clarity, as I wrote down, and Kevin, this is yours, and just confirm whether, I had new survey that shows the correct coverage, pyramid on the building plans, and your presentation, is there anything else?
Those are primarily the unresolved issues, are the issues needing clarity, so.
Yeah.
We went one step beyond that, and I just want to, you know, commend Mr. Lettieri for this. We went one step beyond that, and you could see in, obviously, you know that the neighbor was very concerned about the topography and heights and things like that, so if you see in the submission, which I thought was extremely important, and something Mr. Lettieri did without even my request, he put, there's a topographical rendering that will now show the significant grade differences. Look, if you keep going, go beyond that, there's actually like a 3D rendering.
I think the best thing to do is if I went page by page, which then I could explain to you, and I think it'll, you'll understand it a lot better.
Oh, is it at the end?
The site is a really complicated site and small site, so I think we went page by page.
Let me just ask one question, did you make an application to the conservation board?
If my, the last time we were here, Candace said that it was already been referred to the conservation.
Okay, but have you made an app, I mean.
Not yet.
Still pending an app, you still have to.
Yeah, you refer to them, and then they have 45 days to like act on or something like that?
No, no, I mean, listen, if you, if you're, if you, if it's not subject to their jurisdiction, we'll get a letter of non-jurisdiction, I think you are, I think it's flagged, right, Anthony?
What's that?
This is how wetlands are.
Conservation?
If, if you need a wetlands permit, this board won't even make a decision until you get a permit. Not a referral, a permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's right, but it's wetland, but.
Yeah, but it's so high up that it might be, and it's bulk-headed.
Okay.
So it might be out of his jurisdiction.
But we need to confirm.
He'll have to confirm it, but you're way, way up above the water table there.
Okay.
And it's bulk-headed as well.
Okay, so you.
Okay, so starting.
Starting with page one.
Page one is just obviously showing, we were talking about screening and stuff like that, so it's showing some of the screening, and it's important that you see it, because the original drawings were for talking about side yard variance and stuff like that, so I didn't have the exact topography from the surveyor, which he just gave to me this month. So I knew it was being nestled into the hillside, but here you can get a little more clarity, because the top of the building, and we'll go through it, is at 35 or 36, I think 35, and the, the grade point over there is one of the highest, like average points, not average, but high point, is like 29 feet. So the building is up, so the soil has to be retained, because the building is getting slid into the side of the hillside there. So if you go to page two, where I showed you this picture last time, the existing house compared to the proposed house, and the middle one is, we discussed about removing, I removed the chimney, because it was a source of contention, I removed portions of the walls and the staircase on the, on the.
On the south side.
On the north side, obviously, like I said, that wall is a retaining wall, but you'll see in elevations, I modified it, and I removed that chimney from there as well, so we'll just do direct vent, like gas-fired fireplaces, so the, I don't know, it won't add any additional height there. And then the third picture, you can see how it's nestled in on the north side, a retaining wall that holds the soil back in the front of the house, then obviously, the retaining wall goes to a certain point, and you'll see that in topography, it drops off, and then that back retaining wall on the staircase retains the rest of the soil from falling into the, the pool area. So this is just a site plan of it, showing the chimney, the red is areas that are being removed or modified, as per our conversation last time, from feedback from the neighbors.
Being removed from the original plans that we submitted.
I remember, I remember the, the south side, for sure.
And then this is the updated topography from the, from the surveyor, so obviously, the very northwest corner of the property is at 33 feet, right? So obviously, our top of our building is at 36 or 35, I can't see in there, so there is a huge grade change from the back to the front, so the building is actually going to get plugged into that, there's a lot of retaining and carving out for this whole thing to go in there, so it's really a, a one-story structure, it's slid in there, and then the basement of the structure is exposed to the back of the property, and it's retained to, obviously, on both sides, it has to be retained, because even on the street side, you can see the topography, you have, you know, 20 feet in the side yard, like right off the street, it rolls up from, if you were at the property from the road, the dirt rolls up really high up into the property there, so that's all that topography there. Now we're on the fourth page, this is probably why the building department didn't refer it, because, you know, some of the benchmarks that were on the original survey had some topography on it, and they could see that, you know, the, the dirt, the average grade of the dirt is a lot higher than the, the, the top of the roof, so it's just showing that, and we'll get the surveyor to put this in the plan and sign off on that whole entire thing for you as well, but that's probably why the, the building department didn't bring up a pyramid situation on there.
So you're saying that there is no pyramid relief required because of the elevations?
No, based on the average grade and everything, it's not, and the surveyor will go through all that, and the building can actually be moved over a little bit either way, it has room to go either way in that, in that whole scenario.
So you're saying that you will not require pyramid relief?
To my knowledge and the information I got from the surveyor, we are not going to need it, because your grade, you know, the average grade in there is around like 24 or something like that, and the top of the building is at 35. That's us 11-foot difference, and we're further than 11 feet from the property line.
Okay, and you have a professional that says.
The surveyor is going to do it, because he's going to topography on it, and he'll take care of all that stuff.
Will that be reviewed by the building department?
It needs to be.
Yeah.
So I sent all, everything's going to the surveyor, and he'll update everything with that. And the next page is just a foundation, it shows like some of the retaining walls that are there, that are at grades, these are just floor plans, just so you can see.
Can I, just quickly, going back to that pyramid page, showing what's being removed, the, the little drawing on the bottom?
There'll be better pages at the back.
My question is, if you're, you're removing that whole wall on the.
South side.
South side, is that what it is?
Yeah, we had a wall that was hiding the staircase.
With the staircase, right.
Yeah, so that, that wall, obviously, whatever was above the grade, I'm removing it, and I'm removing the staircase as well.
And by removing the staircase, you're only going to have access to the downstairs by going into the house from the top level?
Yeah, that's, that's a sacrifice for it, to get rid of that whole situation.
Got it.
All right, what page are we on?
And that reduces the variance request for the staircase and some of the wall.
Staircase wall, it's really just like.
Well, removes that request.
At least with respect to the south side, which is going to be, right, because we have waterfront and then street front, so that's going to be one of the front yard variances that we were seeking would now be relieved.
I mean, what, the reality of the situation.
What are you doing in terms of screening, because I know that there's a whole open plan for that bottom part?
I showed, and you can see in the first page, I showed Leyland Cypress, like in the drawing, and that's what we had noted in the landscape plan that we gave you previously.
Perfect.
So remember, our position the last time we were here is that the screening would have covered that retaining wall and staircase that you would have seen, theoretically seen from the south side, so even though our screening would have covered that, because we would have put trees on the property line, we're still removing it, so even though you're not going to be able to see it, we're still removing it as an accommodation to, you know, obviously, our prior discussions.
I'm fine with it, and in, it actually has a, sometimes when you reevaluate things and look at things, something better comes out of it, so.
That's right.
Looking at the staircase, the staircase, the bridge effect that I have walking from the front yard, now what goes out there, you're bridging across the garage entrance, and the thing floats now, so it'll have a cool effect on it.
Is there going to be a railing on that, there's no railing in the rendering?
Glass railing. All right, so I think we were on floor plans, and then elevations, which are just general stuff, so just give me information. The front and rear elevation, you can kind of see, if you look at those pages, you can see the walls with the soil, the soil is those lines, because that's just contouring down to you, so looking at the north side, like the top elevation, you can see how high the grade is, and that's towards the front of the house, and then obviously, the grade, it's a hill, so the grade gets lower and lower as it comes to you, and the same thing that's happening on the south side as well, and you can see how that balcony, the entrance to the front door is floating in the air, it's not touching anything, it's all cantilevered now, and then the front elevation, we saw that one already.
And he is referencing, just for the record, page nine of the submission that we provided today.
And then on 10, you can see where we removed the chimney from that whole north side, I put a screen wall in there for privacy, so that's just like open louvers on our angles, so it lets some transparency and light through, but you can see the dirt, the height of the grade there, and you can see relatively, you know, the building there, you know, so it's not this building that's 30 feet out of the ground, it's, you know, it's literally like, probably like 12 feet out of the ground there. Just the back corner where that floating deck is, is a little bit higher out of the ground, obviously, but we eliminated the chimney, which was a little more aggressive, that went up higher, and that whole structure got eliminated in that design, and then we took the wall, and you can see in both side elevations, we took the glass railing, and then also transitioned the, the retaining wall to follow the glass railing down, so that it, it becomes the railing for the staircase and retains the soil at the same time.
Just to stay on that page, it was, again, some confusion at the prior meetings, these elevations that are on the right-hand side of page 10 are from sea level.
Yeah, they correspond to the, if you look at the surveyor's contour map, which was on page three, those numbers correspond, those are the numbers that we go off of, because like if you're, his number says 30, 29, 28, that's how, those are in, correspond with like our elevation, those are called benchmarks from the surveyor, so that's why it says 36 or 37, it's not the actual height of the building, because it's from grade, the grade adjacent grade is, is what that.
So there was some confusion at prior meetings, that that number with 36 feet was, meant that it was a 36-foot tall building, and that is not the case. So it's 36 feet, starting at 13 feet 8 inches.
So it's 20-something?
Correct.
Okay.
And the back of it is at the highest point, but most of the house is not, most of the houses are one single-story structure.
What's the highest point on the back of it?
The highest point on the back is.
22.
Yeah, grades at, like, I think it's at 14, top of the building, top of the roof is at 36, so.
We're on the next page now.
14 minus 36. That's the highest point in the back, the very back, but the north side is obviously really low, as you see it, the south side, same thing, it retains, the retaining wall, so obviously, you can do a walkout, so it's almost like a walkout window, like area on the side of the building, so that you can utilize that basement area as a, as a living space. The next page is just another colored elevation, which is similar to the black and whites, and I think now we get into the perspectives with the contours, which I think is really helpful, and you can see how the building is nestled into that hillside, so it's a really low profile, and that was part of the original design, I understand some of those renderings are really dramatic, because they're, it's taking a picture from the back of it, looking up at it, and it's like, huh, right, because it's like, looks grand and everything, but the reality of it is, it's supposed to be like the front of the house, when you pull up to it, it's supposed to be very subdued design, low profile, like very California, you know, style, so like a low clean thing, and then it drops down on the hillside there, so the only dramatic portion of it, that any really, is going to really experience, is the people that are down by the pool looking up at the structure, you know, from the street and the entrance of the street, it's just going to look like a single-story building, and from the north side, the same thing pretty much, so that just, this is looking from the southeast of the building, so looking at that building from that direction, and you can see how the contour and the building slides into that hillside, and then the next page is just looking from like, you know, east, north, looking south, from the north side there, and you can see how the building, the dirt travels down along those retaining walls, and then picks up on the next retaining wall that's against the house, and then we'll have the tree line along that, the neighboring property all along there, so, you know, on top of that wall in the front of the house, there's probably only like 6 feet of the house that's exposed, right, because blow down, and you put a 8 to 10 Leyland Cypress, you're never going to see anything there, because that, you know, you're pretty much in the top corner, you could look over the top of the roof if you wanted, if there was nothing there, so it's down into there, and the same thing with the last two, so it's just a couple perspectives to try to let everybody understand how this thing is nestled into the hillside. Do you have any questions?
A couple.
We'll have a couple of questions, I'm sure, Kevin's choice, go ahead.
Yeah, just, you know, I appreciate the effort made to make this, you, you said something earlier about just, there's a lot going on here, and it's a pretty small lot, with interesting topography and other things, so I just want to acknowledge, I appreciate the effort that you made. A couple things, one is, there's some fairly mature oaks on the way to, to the water, I think, I'd like to have some discussion around keeping those or retaining them, because in as much as I think you've presented this better, and it, and it looks better and alleviates some of the concern I have, it's, it's still a 70-foot structure, even though I understand everything you just said, and the, the native planting scheme is preferred over a Leyland Cypress planting scheme generally?
I mean, just, I don't mean to interrupt, but the, the oaks and everything that are back there, for me, I would leave those oaks, I would just raise the canopy of them a little bit, just so it's columnar, and the scale of it, I need to have, I'd rather have something with scale to put the house in context with the site, so I'd rather have something tall, so that the house doesn't feel like it's out of scale either.
I, I'm, I'm a literalist, so when I see there's not a, a tree anywhere that looks like it's been there for 10 years, I'm reacting to that, so I appreciate that, if you don't mind, and we can get that into a condition on, on the approval as well.
I agree with that, too.
So, all right, so what do we, what would be?
I think leaving the, some of the mature oaks, or whatever they are there, and just being able to raise the canopy on it, so it doesn't obstruct the view, but scale and have the columnar tree coming up through the site is beautiful to have on the site anyway.
Can I just ask to clarify, when you say some of them, what, what is that?
I don't know, I don't know which exact trees, I didn't, I didn't do a field survey of actually trees that are there.
Mature oaks.
There's mature oaks he's talking about.
And they're, they're.
Would you also put the cypress in as well?
Yeah, we do, well, the mature oaks are, I think they're in the middle of the property, right, so like, they're in the central portion of the property.
And it also looks like they're past the pool, so I don't think it grades that conflict.
As long as it's not obstructing where the pool's going, anything like that, and I can, and I can raise the canopy up, because I'd rather have the, a clean trunk rising up.
Understood.
And a nice column, and looking out onto the water.
Okay, thank you, that, that was one concern I have, I just think that also impacts what somebody walking down to the water with a stroller or something would see, as opposed to just a wall of cypress.
I agree, 100%.
Okay, so that's one, and what, if anything, is happening on the roof, if anything?
It's a rubber roof that's on top of the roof.
Okay, so.
No access.
No deck, no, there's no access on that.
So that can be stipulated.
There is a, there's just a balcony off the living room there, which is, that's it, in the back.
On the water side.
On the water side.
So we.
No rooftop deck.
All right, so we could acknowledge that in the.
Yeah, I, I don't want a rooftop, that would look like crap, with railing up there, that's like beyond.
We've had other issues with this.
We've had issues with this, you don't want to know about it. Okay.
Glass railings.
There's no.
I yield to my colleagues.
There's no new survey, so.
Well, the, the survey is that topography map, so I'll have him, that's the newest version that he gave me on November 5th, so we'll have him update whatever he's got to update, and he'll just tweak and move everything around, but we'll get everything.
Take the topography lines out, because that makes it really hard.
I know, but the topography was important for this meeting.
No, no, for this meeting, absolutely, we've got the file now, we've got it in the record, but I'm just saying.
I wanted to get some more feedback before I get more involved with the drawing, so that we're moving in the right direction, because it's a lot of time ahead of you.
Regular survey would be much easier.
Yeah, right, but I think you should note on the survey, the landscaping.
Yeah, we had, on the last time, we had a landscape plan, but we'll do a totally separate landscape plan, if I have to, I'll go out to the site, or I'll have the surveyor, like locate those big trees, and he could put them on, I'll tag them, I'll drive out there, I'll tag them, and then he could locate them, put them on the survey, and then it can be part of the record that they're on the survey, and we'll just make a note about raising the canopy on them.
That's what, that's what I would like to.
Yeah, and the conservation board would probably ask the very same questions with the same concerns.
All right, so it seems that you still need to approach the conservation board, wetlands permit.
Yeah, I was wondering if anybody has anything from Con Board, Candace's, like, correspondence log does say we got something 925, just says, receive referral response from conservation board, a wetland permit application needs to be filed. Oh, somebody has it.
I've got something here, from September 24th. It says, based on environmental field assessment, subject waterfront properties marked by a partially failing bulkhead with high tide water is bypassing the structure, thereby setting the town wetland permitting authority at 200 feet landward of surface, as such conservation, wetland permit application needs to be filed. Did you not get this letter?
We did not.
All right, and then it says.
That's September.
This is September.
We got it, the only thing we heard about wetlands was when Candace said it the last time we were here.
Well, to be fair, to, to be fair, the last time we heard this, looks like it was in September, right?
Yes, but wouldn't it have been served upon us somehow, or?
Cand, Katie, can you make sure that they get a copy of this letter?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So that letter came to the board, doesn't it go to the property owner?
I mean, it's assumed that you are also simultaneously making an application to the conservation board, that's why I said at the first hearing, you should get before the conservation board.
Chuck from land, just take a look at it, and see if the.
I'll give you my copy, but it's my only copy.
Will you? Copy right now.
All right, and then you can just take that. Did anybody else get it, or just me?
No.
Glad I brought it. I'm glad I brought it, but it does deal with the question of the way, so that seems to still be a pending item in, before we can make a final determination.
It's, it's better to go through this process, because we need to know where this is going to wind up, because if we got something approved by you.
And then, yeah, no, you've got to get.
And then the wetlands says, no, it's better.
Well, we don't, we don't do it until wetlands, until we get some, some, all right, is there anything else from members of the board on this application? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be here, please come up.
We'll just have to update some things on this, like, what adjustments we made.
You'll have an opportunity.
Yeah.
For the written submissions.
On the submissions.
You look familiar, did I swear you in on this? Okay, just please state your name again. I'm sorry.
Barbara.
Okay, Barbara.
Okay. I feel like we're, we're the only adjacent neighbor, very nice owners, we've met with them.
Are you the, the neighbors?
We're the only neighbor.
On the side?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does anybody else want a copy?
Same packet we now have.
Perfect.
I went, since we hadn't gotten anything updated, I went in person to the town of Southampton offices on the 2nd of December. I was asked to fill out a FOIA form because Candace was not there, I did. I was told, because they then called Candace, that they had nothing new on file since the last meeting, so I'm responding to what was before, nothing.
Right, so you have not shared this with the neighbor?
Yes, I did, I sent it to him by email.
This whole thing?
Today.
The moment, no, it was yesterday, the moment I got this, I sent it to him, Mr. Jay had emailed me.
Mr. Jay, please sit down, you can't do that.
I'm going to speak for the record.
You should know better.
I received it from Mr. Littary.
Stop.
Yesterday, and as soon as I received it, I immediately sent it to Mr. Jay. Yes, Mr. Jay emailed me on Monday, and I will tell the board, I broke my nose on Thanksgiving, I was at doctors all day on Monday and Tuesday, I did speak to Mr. Littary, and he sent me the document, and as soon as I got it, it happened to be a coincidence that Mr. Jay emailed me the day before.
Okay.
But I sent it to him immediately.
Okay.
I just want to say this, because this is now the third time Mr. Jay has alleged that I did not give him documents, and I've personally delivered documents to his house, I've sent him multiple emails with documents, he responds back to me saying that he cannot open up those documents, because he's not proficient with computers, and under prior times that we came here, I personally delivered them to his mailbox.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification.
I trust you, Jamie, I know you well.
Okay, so in other words, you don't, you haven't, you're just hearing for the first time what the explanation is, you're going to have to take a look at the materials, I think it's like, unless there's something relevant to what's been described today, I think that, you know, we should probably just deal with that, we don't need to deal with the old stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so what would you like to deal with?
Mr. Leonard usually makes comments about going back to the five areas that...
Right, the five-point test, yes.
So I have included that in my answer, specifically in each one, my objection to it, so thank you.
Okay, that's terrific.
The other, the other thing that I would...
Do you have a copy for them?
I have so many.
We just wanted to know, that's all.
And number two, on the, the last thing I'll bring up on, and that's in my packet, the letter that you did not receive from the Conservation Board, Harry Lovlo, it said number two, "As the current project plans would require the granting of significantly lesser wetland construction setbacks than the minimum 100-foot wetland setback required by 325-9, it is highly unlikely that the current redevelopment proposal would be let wetland permitted. As such, any decision on the pending variance application needs to be held in abeyance until the requisite wetland approvals are obtained."
That's right, and we are going to hold...
It will be.
Thank you.
It will be.
It will be, and they...
It's just as a matter of course.
And also, you should get the new information to the Conservation Board, for sure, because, you know, they may be looking at old information.
Yeah, we reduced it.
From the original, you know, with the different bulkhead, you know, all that stuff, so you need to...
It's not my first, it's not my first time with the rodeo, we did, you know, Jobs Lane and Bridgehampton, the whole site was wetlands, and we built a house with a pool on top of the roof.
So you know, you know you have to, you have to go through that process.
This is not as substantial as like a project I did on Jobs Lane, so this is a lot, a lot less impacted wetlands.
You hope that they, yeah. Okay, so...
And I would just like to say, I don't think I've taken my three minutes, I would just like to say that I only got this letter, and I only got this letter because I went in person, and they gave it to me.
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't have it.
I'm apparently the only one who ever received the letter, and I just assumed that it was...
It's dated September 24th.
Yeah, it's the 24th, so...
It's funny that it says that, because who's the, the conservation, if you're really a conservationist, to leave a house like that, that's pumping nitrogen into the ground and crap, when you can put a new nitrogen system in and a new house and everything else?
You have a lot of arguments that you can make.
Is this for me?
Yes, that's for you? Okay?
You can have that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
That's exactly what I gave your husband by email.
Okay, yeah, but by email, I know, trust me, I get it, it's not so easy.
I have a good phone, and I don't own a computer.
And I have a computer, and some of the stuff on email is just so hard to read, but now you've got the full, and you've got the explanation as well.
And you have time.
Yeah, you have time, you have time, because they have to go through the whole wetlands process too, so. Okay, anybody else in the audience? Okay, thank you, you, all right, you need to comment? Okay. Three minutes. Okay, I know I've sworn you in, just restate your name, please.
Yes, Robert J.
Okay, Robert.
Well, not to use my time, the drawing is not accurate, just like the other drawings submitted. This is where the property ends, seven foot, and they're showing the cypress beyond, so this is not accurate, if the cypress were budding here, and this is not accurate, because the driveway goes to the border of the property, so there isn't this adjunct adjacent property, that's my property. It's not correct, it's absolutely incorrect.
Okay, you know, Robert, let me just say this, they're going to have a new survey that's going to show what the, it's hard to read on the, one with all of the...
The, the survey shows the driveway coming to the edge of the property. For the record, we are not attempting to build anything on property that is not owned by my client. Oh, of course not, oh, I'm not, not, if you think that's what I said, I didn't say that.
The house is 13 feet off the property line.
Right, the driveway goes to the edge of the property.
No, I moved it back, because I have the retaining wall.
Oh, okay, on, on your own plans tonight?
That is a older survey, it still shows a chimney on it, it's just a topography map, so if you want me to educate, I can do it in a very nice way, I can educate you on it, but...
Okay, then the drawings are mixed here, some are new, some are old, some show the pool on the right side of the property, some show the pool on the left side of the property.
So just, just so you know, you're seeing this for the first time, and so have we.
I saw it yesterday.
Hold on.
As James said.
Wait, 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 just slow down. So, let's go through this calmly.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Jay.
Try not to repeat anything you previously told us, and focus on, and you're only seeing this for the first time, you'll have more time to submit additional comments, we're not making a decision tonight or anytime immediately.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, these are your, these are your comments?
Yes.
Okay, I think before you go further, you need to familiarize yourself with what is just come out hot off the presses, as we are, and you're certainly welcome to submit additional written comments.
Here, give this to me.
And as I said, and as Mr. McDonald said, this is not going to be decided...
Tonight.
Tonight. It's not even going to be decided the next meeting, or the meeting after, because we still have to go through the wetlands permit.
Yes, understood.
And so there'll be an opportunity for you to digest this stuff, rather than go through, unless you've got something new to, to add to this.
I only have this one page.
Okay, but we don't need to, we don't need you to...
We don't need to read it into the record.
We're gonna...
It's in the record now, you just put it in the record. Did you, Katie, did you get a copy of this?
We heard last time.
Well, can you give Katie a copy?
Give Katie a copy, and that'll become part of the record.
No. I got it, I got it, thank you.
I don't understand. It is new information.
If you haven't looked at the new plans you just gave us, how could it be new information?
And we know your concern.
No, and, and, and sir, you're...
What I have done, even if I'm just allowed to have three minutes.
No, but, but sir...
It's only one page. Sorry if you're upset.
All right, madam, we're going to be here forever.
Mr. Leonard, I'm just trying to address your issues, this is new information that we haven't discussed, or I haven't presented, maybe to you it's not...
Okay, so why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Going down your application, the variance requests completely fail to meet your own criteria, as presented on your application. We just don't understand why it's being considered. Number 13, is this a minor variance? No, absolutely not. 14, the area variances in total are for 60 feet. We're not asking for area variances.
Let him have his opportunity, you can respond.
Yes, on each side, on all four sides of the property, they total 60 feet. Is it an undesirable change to the neighborhood or detriment to the neighboring properties? The answer is yes to both. The proposal calls for denaturalizing the property, and unlike what has been said here, it will result in the removal of all existing trees on the property. They removed four oaks already that they weren't allowed to by the bay, and this will remove all the other mature oaks on the property. It's, it's one of the largest properties on the block already, it's 1,564 square feet. It's not in character with their proposing with, with our block and neighborhood, we have smaller modest homes on larger properties, this is one of the largest homes on the block already, on the smallest property of all on the block. And they're basically building, as I've presented it prior, so I won't go into it, on all the buildable land, the property slopes down as it approaches the bay, and there's an area that you really could not build on, because it slopes down to the bulkhead and to the water, so they're building on all the land that they can, from the driveway at the very front, to where the pool ends at the back. As the immediate neighbor, granting these variances will be a huge detriment to our property. Number 15, loss of nature, loss of privacy, sky plane impact and correlating losses of sunshine and views, loss of habitat, negative impact on the bay, stormwater runoff, damage incurred by our mature trees and shrubs between the two properties. Can the benefits be achieved? Number 16. By any other method? Method? And the answer is yes, they can either renovate the existing four-bed, two-bath home, or build a new, new home, which would conform to code. Will the variances be substantial? Number 17, yes, again, they're asking for 60 feet around the full perimeter of the property on all four sides. Is there a physical or environmental adverse effect? Yes, they're denaturalizing the property, and that, that has a devastating effect. It impacts natural habitat, the environment adversely affects the land and the bay. The owner's purchase, number 19, a street-side property, a long rectangle, barely in excess of two tenths of an acre, and therefore, everything they're requesting results from this one unescapable fact, it's the epitome of a self-created hardship. They bought this very narrow and very small property, and they want variances on all side of it, but they bought that property, they should have bought a property like Mr. Leonard referenced, across the street, is on a one-acre property, five times the size. Number 20, were all permit certificates acquired? As far as we know, and my wife's been to the various departments numerous times, that answer is no. The letter you didn't get from wetlands, we knew in the summer, we were told by the wetlands and conservation department in the summer, that this development is a non-starter, would not be issued permits, it's too close to the bay, it's too overzealous in all of these aspects, and in the letter from the chairperson, it says that it's highly unlikely that a wetlands permit would not be...
And they're going to have to go through the process and see what the result is. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
If I can just ask one question, sorry if you'll just indulge, and then I'm leaving, I mean, I'm leaving. We come to these meetings, and we appreciate everyone's time, we do, and thank you for your service, but it's, it's a, it's a one-way dialogue, and that, my wife and I don't understand, just, just for your understanding, we don't understand why this is even under consideration, because they bought this very small property.
What's the question?
The question is, is there going to be a time when there's a dialogue? Like if I ask, you know, you listen, but it's not that we're having, it's not giving me an understanding of what's the consideration here, so maybe in a future meeting, there could be some, I don't know if that's protocol, but as far as our understanding, is there any give and take?
I think, hold on, hold on.
There's no give and take.
I think I can answer part of your question, sir.
You're not author, that's the answer, then.
Well, it's not just that, it's, I think something that you have to understand is, it looks to you, from your perspective, that this shouldn't even be entertained, but the fact of the matter is, is that landowners are entitled to make an application to this board for the relief that they requested, and then we vet that information, we compare it and contrast it to the elements of the five-part test, and decide one way or another by an up or down vote. So, we're here simply because a landowner has a right to be here, to, to press their application, just like you have a right to come here and express your objections.
We say no to a lot of things. We say no to a lot of things, we have to consider every application that's before us.
Thank you, well, thank you for the explanation, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And you see, there is a give and take, because here we are today, and there's been changes to the plans, and this application is going to go through the wetlands process, and there could be further changes to the plans, because there may be certain setbacks that are required.
Okay.
We just don't know yet.
Trust me, we do a lot of homework before we come to these meetings, we read all the materials, and we have definitely questioned you very significantly.
And consider the possibility that we understand your concerns.
Yes, we do, but, but as Mr. Leonard said, we have to, we have to weigh landowners', you know, desires to develop their property and, and, you know, community standards, so we're going to take it all into advisement, and thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 19 Bay Drive?
There's one person.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I can't see you.
I'm trying to get the video going, but, oh, hi, I'm Ephinee Ophidos, I am...
Are you an attorney?
My husband and I don't...
Are you an attorney?
I am not an attorney.
Let me swear you in, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Ephinee Ophidos, 20 Bay Drive. My husband Nicholas Campbell and I are the owners of 20 Bay Drive, and we are the neighbors directly across the street from 19 Bay, the frontage of our property is almost 140 feet, so we are really the only neighbors that face 19 Bay Drive. We, we've owned the home for five years, and we welcome the development of 19 Bay Drive. We just have a couple of questions, yet, I should note that yesterday, the homeowners of 19 Bay shared the plans with us, and we just have a couple of questions for the architect regarding the retaining wall, what really is our only concern is the retaining wall on 19, on Bay Drive.
So the retaining wall is only retaining obviously the soil, so at the height of the soil, because if you, you know that side there, the ground goes up, rises up on that property there, from the street, sharply rises up, so that is just retaining the soil there, because the house is kind of pushed down into the hillside, so we removed that tall retaining wall that was carrying the walkway and the staircase that went there, in the original drawings, there was a big wall that was like probably six, seven feet above the grade, and went down further and hid the staircase, we removed all that, the staircase is just, the walkway is just floating, and the retaining wall is approximately like, you know, five feet below that, four feet below that, and then travels down along the property, keeping the soil away, so that the basement can be exposed, so they have a lower level. Basically, the house is a one-story house at the grade, at the street in the front, right? It's just, as the property drops off towards the street and towards the bay, the property gets exposed, and the basement's exposed in the back, so that we can put bedrooms down in the lower area of the house.
So, so how tall is the retaining wall?
The retaining wall is, like, if from what you will see, you'll see, you know, maybe a foot or so at, towards a foot of two feet at the pool side, closer towards the front of the house, you won't see any retaining wall, you're not going to see anything anyway, because there's going to be a row of Leylands or trees there blocking the whole house anyway, that are going to be like eight to 10 feet high anyway, so you're going to see trees.
So, so from the, from the street, so my, so my house really faces the dry, their existing driveway and house, so how much of a difference in elevation is there going to be from the street to the retaining wall?
It rises up about like, probably around like, the dirt rises up like four feet there.
Oh, okay.
So, but you're, we're going to be planting trees on that, it's basically a hillside, right? So we're going to be planting trees along that hillside, so if you look at the first page of the drawings that were sent to you, it shows a perspective of looking at the house from the front, and you can see like a hedge row going along the street, and a hedge row going along the north side, obviously that hedge row would keep on going towards the front of the house, I just stopped it so that you could see what the house looks like, if I bring the hedge there, you wouldn't be able to see the house in context with the site.
Okay, I just, I wasn't able to understand it from these, these plans.
If you need to have a private conversation with me, I could, I could have a call with you, and I could explain it to you a little further if you need to.
So you said it's about four feet above street level, the retaining wall?
Yeah, but that's the dirt, because the dirt rises up like four feet in the mid, in average.
Yes, it's, yes, it's very regular over there, okay, I, I think that is, as far as I know, the concern of myself and the people on the block walking down, it's a beaut, it looks like a beautiful home, and like I said, we look forward to the development of this home on the block.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
If I could just underscore, you know, we're not making a decision tonight, you have more plans that you have to do, you have to go to another board, to the extent that you use this time, the time period you have now, to have that communication with the project sponsor, do that, and people will understand better what you're proposing.
We're just trying to educate everybody on it, because it's complicated.
No, I think you did a, you did a good job today, I think it was...
One step at a time. One step at a time.
Yeah, I think it was fairly clear. Okay, Kevin, this is yours.
So how do we want to handle adjourning this?
Well, we're not going to be able, we're going to.
Have to hold it open, K, right?
Do you want to adjourn and have them come back once the Wetlands permit comes in? Is that your sense? Is that the sense of the board?
Yeah, I'd put it over to February at least, and then see where you are.
Which February?
February 5th.
25, James? 25?
That works.
219.
Yeah, all right, so let's propose adjourning to.
I will, I'll make a motion to adjourn the hearing.
Why don't we put it on the 19th?
I'm sorry?
Why don't we put it on the 19th?
I'll be away on the 19th.
No, February 5th.
Thank you.
You're going to have time anyhow to get the Wetlands stuff done. So go ahead.
So I'm going to.
Yeah, and if we don't have feedback from the Wetlands, we can just adjourn it from that point. We just need to get to them and let them understand what's going on with it and the benefits of it.
Okay, so Kevin, you want to make a motion?
So we will adjourn this, I'll make a motion to adjourn this hearing at 19 Bay Drive LLC to February 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. Burgess.
Nope, she recused herself.
She's recused. That's right, she's recused. Mr. Mastonia, aye. Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
And Chair was aye. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Members of the board, thank you very much, happy holidays to everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Good luck with your notes.
Thanks.
Hopefully, there's a good story behind it.
Good night to you, too.
Touch football gone wrong.
Number seven on the agenda, application of Ariati LLC, 292 West Montauk Highway, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-253-1-25.
Thank you.
Come on down. You're the next contestant.
For the applicant, David Gilmore, Greenberg Troy.
Hold on, we're just getting ourselves settled. I know you've been waiting, but give me one second here.
He's ready to go.
All right, okay.
Sat here long enough.
David, you always bring names. Okay.
I tried to get the three-minute rule in place. It doesn't apply to applicants.
Okay.
Okay, now we're ready.
All right, for the applicant, David Gilmore, Jr., Greenberg Troy, 2317 Montauk Highway, Bridge, Hampton. I have a member of the LLC, John Tortorella here.
Are you going to speak, John?
What's that?
Are you going to speak?
If you want me to.
Okay, well, maybe. Are you an attorney?
No.
Let me swear you in.
I'm the owner.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Okay, please state your name again and your address.
John Tortorella, 54 Dundee Lane.
Okay, David, I assume you're making the presentation. It's been quite a while.
It has been a while, and during that time, we were in front of the planning board, which you deferred to for SECR, and we got a neg deck under type one, I can hand up a copy of it to you, but that was the time delay here. I know I've been over this officially with you a couple of times, so I apologize if I repeat myself. Property is located west of the Bodie Barn and east of central the restaurant, if you know that. It's on the north side of the road, and it backs onto the Long Island Railroad. Our application tonight is to build three different structures that total 29,096 square feet. Since it's one lot, it's limited to 15,000 square feet. Our argument here is that we're entitled to divide this property into three different lots, using the 15,000 square foot minimum, that would give us 45,000 square feet, and we're only asking for 29,096 square feet of structure. I handed up some documentation to help us along the way, which I think is important. The first exhibit A is a shot at first the property, and then the property's on the north side of Montauk Highway. I then provided you an aerial right here. As part of our application and presentation on SECR, we gave the zoning board a copy of a proposed three-lot sub, we're not proposing it, but that we could subdivide in three lots, and it meets zoning requirements. And then I provided you with a decision, and I rarely say this, but I believe that this decision sets a precedent for our application, because it is so closely aligned. And if you look, it's this property here directly to the west.
Hold on, let me just get that. Which property is it?
It's directly to the west.
Quinlan?
This right here.
Yeah.
Right next to it.
Okay, so is it the Quinlan Electric? Is that what it is?
Uh, no.
Oh, it's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's.
Right here. Right next to the red dot.
Oh, so it's not west, it's east. Didn't you just say?
I think that's west. So property is east.
East.
The property's east, but the one I'm talking about is west.
Okay, got it.
So the subject of the prior decision that this fate board made is to the west.
Okay.
That's the 2008 decision?
Correct, correct. And if you look at it, or if you have a chance to look at it, that property is 130,769 square feet. There were 29,160 square foot of structure. We're seven, nine, nine square feet less, and then.
Are you a bigger piece of property?
We are nine square feet less than.
In terms of?
Total square footage.
Of the buildings or of the property?
Of the property.
Oh, okay.
So it's the same.
Okay, it's essentially.
Exact same-sized property, and we're asking for less, about 20 square feet less of square footage for the structure. So it is basically the same property. And that's really the driving argument of our case, is that we could subdivide it into three lots, we could yield a significant amount more of density here, but are choosing to do it this way. I suspect if we're not successful tonight, that we'll see a subdivision application in there and a full yield. So with respect to the benefit to the gap, we can, obviously, he's going to get the opportunity to develop the property. I think there's also a benefit, and it's, again, one of those strange cases where the variance is less impactful than the as-of-right application. So I think that there's a benefit to the, to the town here. With respect to the character of the neighborhood, this, the poppy-mongo decision, it is pretty clear that the development there was consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and it's, I don't want to say virtually the same, but it's not much different in this, in the application that's before you. I'd also note with respect to the character of the neighborhood, and I think it fits in the theme of what we're saying tonight, is we're going to have 18.44% of lot coverage where 30 is permitted, right? You can also think about that in a way that if the application's not granted, there's the difference, right? We can add 12% more of lot coverage.
What's allowed, the coverage, 20?
30.
30.
And it's 19 and change on the property next door, so this is less than that. I think, you know, there's no other way to achieve the benefit. The way we can achieve the benefit here would be to subdivide the property and put in three, the same or larger building, so I don't think there's any other way we can do that. I think that same argument holds for substantiality, right? That this is less substantial than our as-of-right application, and this board has to consider the totality of the circumstances, and I think that's a compelling circumstance here. No, and we turn to the impact on the environment, we went through the secret process, and we have a copy of the neg deck, so that we know impact to the environment. And self-created hardship, I've been thinking a lot about that one, right? You know, it's, I think it's more of an anomaly in the code, where when they adopted this law, they didn't consider oversized lots, right? So it says building or building complex. So I don't think that that was considered, and I say that because I was around when it was adopted, and it was called the big box store law, right? And they were trying to prevent big box stores from coming in.
Home Depot and.
Right, exactly. And so, you know, so I say that there was no consideration by the town board on these oversized lots, so, you know, I think it makes sense to come here, to make these presentations, that the process works, but it seems like a pretty clear case, at least from our end.
Were there parking considerations? I mean, do you have another?
Yes.
Because I noticed in the report that came with the declaration that I had in my file that was addressed, and they had plenty, you had plenty of parking.
Yes.
And they had all the suggestions, sidewalks and landscaping and other things that they put into.
I have to go back to site plan.
So you have to go back to them.
So all of that, all of that will be addressed. The one, I think the one recommendation regarding parking came from the planning staff, that we put enough parking in for special trade contractor use, which there isn't a lot, enough space in the east end for those. So we did accommodate that request, which is clearly a benefit to us as well.
Right.
That was the only discussion on parking.
So following everything you said, I know the area well, I live in Hampton Bays, some of the pictures I got. So, you know, most of the public's impact is going to be the first building they see.
Correct.
What's behind it is really for.
Invisible.
Almost, right? So, and therefore, you know, whatever, you know, in the site plan process that planning board requires, you know, maybe more trees and screening on Montauk Highway, because that's an issue. Some of the things you have pictures of are, you know, 1960s leftovers, right? And one hopes we do it a little bit better today than then, but, you know, I think, you know, what trees get left, Anthony, right, at the, you know, in the site plan process, and I think, you know, most of the case you've made, I find reasonable and compelling, so.
So that was, that was a point of discussion, both the building, which we will go to the Architectural Review Board, we've been once already, and I think we've tweaked it in a way that they found acceptable. And there was some discussion about what we're going to retain as part of a landscape plan.
Yeah.
But there is, there is that plan. If you look at the property next door, there is, there is a, you know, a bed, and there is screening there, so that is our plan.
So the only thing you're coming to us for is basically to say, is the 29,000 square feet versus 15,000, is that it?
Correct, that's it.
And that's it?
And that's the only really.
No setbacks, nothing else?
Not yet.
Well, just so I could add something, so the board knows, when you got this, when we did a pre-application on this, and then we sent over comments, we went through a lot of stuff about the size of the variance. But understand, in case there was anything that they're concerned, when the planning board does a pre-submission conference, that's an early stage, to give them comments on anything and everything to do with the project, and then subsequent to that, they've tweaked it, we went through a whole traffic, you know, analysis and everything else, so, you know, after we get those initials reviewed, there's probably things in there that we say that we've addressed and are in the process. Certainly, the planning board didn't do a conditional neg deck, making any recommendations for change in building size or anything like that. So I think the three-lot subdivision with 45,000 square feet is.
Was it a straight neg deck or a conditional?
No.
I don't like the conditional.
They're hard to work with.
They're hard to work with, right? Because you don't know when you get to the site plan. Things change often on site plans, and is it material, not material, wait, there was a condition, and it really hamstrings your ability, because that document follows you. So I think it's, I don't want to speak for Anthony, but.
So.
We're doing less, we're doing less of those than we used to.
Do you have anything else?
So where are we in the process now? Where?
We have to say that they can do three buildings.
So you need a decision from us to go forward.
To do the site plan, to get the final whatever.
I understand, okay.
This is yours, do you have any comments?
So we're going to.
No, no, do you have any comments? Because I have to ask for comments.
I don't.
Anybody else on the board?
No.
It's been a long process.
Secret.
I know.
The planning board.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on, what's the address? 292 West Montauk Highway? Anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application?
No one.
If there are revised, like, site plan or anything that we need to be referring to, the last one we have is 2124.
I can, I mean, the site plan part of it, what we're requesting, hasn't changed.
No, I know, but it's, you know, usually they refer to something, I mean.
Is this it here?
No.
No, that's, that's the.
That's the three buildings.
Theoretical subdivision.
Submit it, though.
Yeah, submit it.
Okay.
Want to close it then? You want to hold it open?
Yes, we want to close it.
Submissions, and probably get updated.
So we will close the public hearing, hold it open for written submissions till December 19th, enough time, Dave? And then with a decision on January 15th.
Second.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Number eight on the agenda, the application of Joseph Frederick Gazzetta and Blair Catherine Gazzetta, scrub property in Quiag, Suffolk County Tax Map numbers, 900-359-1-22.1, 26.1, and 900-359-2-9.1, and 10.1.
Really, that kind of money?
I don't need to do much.
You're back.
All right, before you start, what are we addressing?
I'm here to make a short presentation.
All right, yeah, because we're still waiting for all sorts of things, I mean, you know, as far as I know, there's nothing that we can do at this point. You just want to make a short presentation?
I want to bring you up to speed, if I may.
That'd be perfect, bring us up to speed.
You sworn in already?
Yes, yes, yes.
My name is Joseph Gazzetta, I live in Quiag, on 5 Ogden Lane. If you want me in two minutes, I'll bring you right up to speed.
All right, that would be good, thank you, we could use that.
This application before you pertains to a frontage requirement for lots, building lots. The code says each lot has to have 40 feet frontage.
Right.
Okay? And this particular case involves a six-acre tract of land on an old filed map west of Peters Lane in Quiag that has no frontage at all, okay? The portion of this old filed map, this is what the map looked like in 1909 and 1910, this is what it looks like today. 90% of the map has been reviewed by the planning board, and they created 36 or 37 lots. Mr. Daddalde developed this 20 years ago, with open-spaced land to protect the headwaters of the Aspetuck Creek. So they did a, you know, pretty nice plan, nice development, and at the time, the planning board left a road called Kathy's Way, which was to give access to the remaining 10% of the map, which became Joe Gazzetta land. So I bought the 10% yellow portion of the map, and I relied on the filed map to.
And the road.
For the road to develop this. Well, it turned out that the town Community Preservation Department bought several of the Daddalde lots, and including in the deed, and they took a deed by lots, also by meets and bounds, they went around it, they included the street, which cut off my access.
But you had an easement already, though.
Not yet. Now, I should have, and I argued that with two attorneys for the town, representing Community Preservation, Mary Wilson and Lisa Combreck. We went over that a couple of years back and forth. I felt that as a street on an approved subdivision that filed in the county clerk.
You can't buy it.
Yeah, you can't buy it, or I still have rights over it, unless the street was abandoned, which it was not, not formally abandoned. So that argument went for a couple of years, and to no success. Fighting two female attorneys was very difficult, even for me, so.
Oh, please. That's the wrong argument. You've just, you've just lost him. And Ellen. And Katie.
So I retract it.
Okay, thank you.
I retract. And I retracted from my application with the planning board, I says, I'll have to get different access, now that I lost my access in, which led me to the Nukewitz deal. Remember this?
Oh, yeah.
This, this entire piece was the six acres that I owned. It's in a one-acre zone, but when I lost the access coming in, and I became landlocked, I made a deal with Mr. Nukewitz, and exchanged this parcel of land for a 30-foot all-purpose easement, for access, utilities, et cetera. And when that was accomplished, I got back before the planning board, because now I And when that was accomplished, I got back before the planning board, because now I had the marbles in the bag to do the application. But the planning board, they got a little tough. They said, we think that this is, you know, environmentally sensitive property, and it is, because it does border the Aspetuck Creek, and they said, we want to see some, some protection. And what you're proposing, Mr. Gaze, which was a, a five lot, yeah, one, two, three, a five lot map, they felt that was a bit too much. And then the planning board realized that one of the five lots was actually less than 40,000 square feet, and they said, we can't approve a lot less than 40,000 square feet anyway.
Hadn't you already given that lot?
Yeah, but I was involved with Mr. Nukewitz in a joint application to divide this into the five building lots.
Okay.
So Mr. Nukewitz's lot became nixed because it wasn't 40,000 square feet.
Okay.
He didn't have development rights. Planning board said, we cannot entertain an application to make a lot without the right tools. So that, that brings me down to four lots, which was before the planning board. And that was an application that I made five years ago. I paid the $2,600 fee, just let me have four lots. And I'm, and as an inducement, I offered to place a conservation easement on about, I think it's about an acre and three quarters with the Aspetuck Creek, and it backs up the neighbors on the other side of the street. I thought that was going to be the, the carrot to get this application going with the planning board. And I put the conservation easement on it, so it's protected, okay? Go back to planning board, the planning board said, eh, you know, maybe you should sell this land to community preservation. So I said, hmm, you know, I'll, I'll entertain that. I'm, I'm a business person, I, I, I don't have to develop it, I can sell it. I went to community preservation, okay? Year and a half, they declined to purchase the property, okay? Their reason? The access. They said, yes, you have a 30 foot all purpose easement, but we don't like the way that the access easement is worded. And I said, but the access easement was provided to me by the planning board. It's their form. I used the.
He keeps looking at me every time. It's not in my application, I should clear this up.
I don't care, you, you've got the planning board across your.
So they won't buy it. And I tried, and I tried, and they're not buying it, okay?
They're the ones that took away your easement in the first place.
The town took away the easement, the plant, the community preservation won't buy, but I do have a 30 foot easement to come in. So the chairwoman of the planning board was kind of adamant, she says, I think they should buy it. I said, let them buy it. She, she says, go back to them, go back to them again. And I went back several times, they're not buying it. So now I'm back at the planning board, saying, look, it's been five and a half years since I made the application, community preservation is not buying it. I started out with five lots, I'm asking for four, they comply with every section of the zoning code. They're 40,000 square feet, they're under the old map law, they're in compliance. They got the setbacks, they got the 250 feet for the sanitary system, the 100, 100 foot unvidgined, 100 foot non-disturbance buffer, they got the 125 foot building setback, conservation board approved, DEC approved, town trustees was about, health department is ready to sign off, but they won't sign off until the planning board stamps the map. I've been to all, everybody, I thought I had this. Nope, didn't get it. At the last section of the planning board meeting, maybe going back about 11, 10, 11 months, when I thought I had it, the planning board said, you know, you have to have 40 feet frontage for each lot under our code. I said, well, I have, I have the easement coming in with a road going down. No, that's not 40 feet frontage, go to zoning board. I made the, Katie and I did this December of 2024, okay? I made the application, it was a little complicated, and Katie said, you know, we're going to need a map without all these lines and everything, just show us your four pieces of land, make it simple.
Remind me, what are we waiting on?
Joe, where, where are we today?
Yeah, this is, I, this, we've heard, this is.
We've heard this before.
Heard this all.
We're all up.
Not to be, not to cut you off.
Four lots, not going to go.
No, but wait, hold on.
No, he's, he's, our last meeting, he's talking about our last meeting that you guys have not.
Oh, that, okay, okay, awesome.
Tell us what happened at the last meeting.
We've coordinated SECR, we're waiting for the planning board to give us, planning board is lead agency, we're waiting for determination. Joe brings this to the planning board to get a determination and.
On SECR?
Correct.
Okay, and so what happened?
The chairwoman of the planning board said, you know, we determined that this is a potential.
Like a negative impact?
Negative. But it was, they, originally it was type two, they had by resolution called this a type two because it was just a rearrangement of property lines.
Why is it potentially a negative?
No, no, let me reword that. Originally, it was classified as a type two action, the planning board has reclassified this new proposal as an unlisted action.
Unlisted, okay.
Okay. So when classifying as unlisted, put the brakes on your board, because you can't act on it now. That's, and that's a little debatable, too. I, I read my SECR, I think you have the opportunity, but I'm, I don't want to fight with anybody anymore in this. Five and a half years was enough. I said to the planning board at the last meeting, I said, you know what? You win. I'll take three lots. And I'll not only give you the acre and three quarters, I'm going to throw in another acre because I'm only going to get three lots anyway. So now you're going to have three and a half acres forever preserved. I'm going to get three one acre lots. I'm going to reduce the density, but put this to sleep. I've had it a long time, been through a lot of boards, a lot of applications.
So it's potentially an unlisted action, which means that, that, but it's not determined to be that yet.
No, it is, I think the.
It is? Is that basically where we are?
It, it is an unlisted action. I mean, Joe disputes that, but we, it isn't, it has been classified.
Oh, it has been.
We have coordinated, the planning board in, what is the date, Joe? January 22nd, the planning board, we're hoping is going to give us a secret determination so that we can act. Joe has now, in, in, in hopes of speeding it up, Joe's reduced the yield to three, hoping that the planning board will say, you know, that's a negative declaration, we'll adopt a negative declaration.
And assuming we hear that, what is it that, Joe, you need from us?
I need a variance from the requirement of 40 foot.
To zero feet.
For three lots.
Which we. For three lots rather than four.
Which we have addressed in the past.
Right, okay.
And he has an easement, but not road access, road frontage.
Right, we've had, hello.
Right, so, yeah, the request is still the same?
Well, it's reduced.
Well, it's going to be reduced as to the number of lots.
Correct.
But same zero.
What are you going to do with the fourth lot?
Giving it to the town.
Giving it to the town, okay.
I'm going to preserve another.
I'm sorry, I went to the restroom, so I may have missed some stuff.
He took the buffer zone and he extended, so the, the lots are.
What do we need to do for tonight?
Nothing.
You're good.
Yeah, well, thank you for the update.
I'm not going to go there.
Okay.
But you're up to speed.
So we're holding you open.
We're holding you open till February.
And everyone got a copy of this map?
219, yes.
No.
Probably not.
We don't have that.
Unless you submitted, remember Candace had asked you.
Yeah, didn't our daughter Blair bring it in? She brought you one print, and she gave prints to Candace.
It could be, Candace has been out, so we know.
All right, you know what, I will give you this print, and I will have more prints.
Just get them to Candace.
No, we don't need it, Joe.
If you gave it to Candace, we're ready to, we'll get it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to do anything until after planning board acts, so just you have some time to submit it to us.
And when is planning board expected to have?
Very clear explanation, and now we're all up to speed, and we know that this can, for us, it's the variance on the frontage.
40 feet to zero feet, and that's it, on three lots.
I'm going to move the whole.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait, we need to.
See if there's anybody here.
Is anybody here?
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on scrub property?
Scrub property.
Okay.
Oh, there's a couple of people online, too, so.
Okay.
My name's Kevin Moynihan, 11 Peters Lane.
Okay, Kevin, did I swear you in before?
In the past?
On this application.
On this application?
Here. Uh, no, I was here at the last one.
Are you an attorney?
No.
Let me swear you in. Swear or tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Kevin Moynihan.
All right, so Kevin, you know that there's, that we're not making any decisions tonight?
Yeah, that's fine.
And, you know, that the only thing that the zoning board is going to address is the frontage. Okay.
We've heard arguments that, from neighbors, that this is going to detrimentally affect an environmentally sensitive area.
I'm very tired with this whole thing, so I'm not going to sit here and waste a little bit of time.
Please, something new, fresh and new.
What he's asking, and what he's asking from you guys, the concerns are just, you know, for emergency vehicle purposes and stuff like that. I won't get into the compounding development of the property and the fact that it.
If you're not going to get into it, don't get into it.
The fact that we're at this point is ridiculous and, and I'll leave it at that. But there are concerns, you know, as to what he's asking for. I don't know what the precedent is that you guys have set in the past with other, you know.
We have dealt, we have dealt with things similar to this because there are properties that are landlocked and don't have the kind of access and people, you know, feel, and people have a right to develop them, and so we do give some consideration.
That's a loaded question right there, but.
Well, okay, but, you know, there's a difference of opinion on that, but, you know, whatever. But, all right, so your concern is that the access is not sufficient.
My, my property butts up to a portion of what it is, and it's more, you know, there's a fire in one of those houses, it's going to affect my, me personally.
A fire in one of the houses he's developing?
Yeah.
And planning does all that, we don't get involved in access?
Yeah, I know, I know. I, I'm, I'm here just because to follow the trail that he leaves, it's insane, so I have to keep up on this, as you're going to hear from about 15 other people that probably want to talk, but.
All right, thank you, Kevin.
I don't want to waste any more here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience? Okay, who's on Zoom?
Two people.
Okay.
Oh, thank God, it's not 15. Two.
There are 15 people watching, there's only two that have enough courage, I guess.
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Are you an attorney?
No, I am not.
Okay, did I swear you, I haven't sworn you in before, right? I don't think so.
Yes, you have.
Oh, I have, okay. Go ahead, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Regina McGuire Moynihan, 11 Peters Lane. Kevin Moynihan is my husband. I just wanted to address the talking points of the substantial nature of the request that Mr. Gaze is asking and seeking to reduce the required frontage from 40 feet to zero. That is, that's an extreme variance. It is not going after and saying, I want to reduce it to 10, I want to reduce it to 20, it's saying, going from 40 to zero. That is far beyond what's considered the minimum necessary deviation, so that's one concern. The frontage requirements are really about emergency access. As a person who had to have emergency access this summer due to an accident, I'm very concerned that if somebody has an accident back there, it'll be extremely difficult and will, it'll be limited, and it will complicate utility and maintenance service as well. The functionally landlocked lots were landlocked when they were procured. The surrounding area consists of lots that meet or approximate the 40 foot standard, and this proposal would introduce an atypical dense and irregular pattern, not aligned with the district currently. And the overlay district allows flexibility, not the elimination of essential safety standards. I, I think that there are reasonable alternatives, but I, I just don't think that we've explored them. And this is also a negative precedent that would, sets precedent in this situation where people could easily request zero frontage variances. And it, it's, it's really opposed to the effect of long-term planning integrity, which the, the town has really sought to try to move forward with, you know, a lot of us live in pre-existing non-conforming homes, but they were built a long time ago, and there's a reason why rules were put in place, especially reopening field maps from 1910, which pre-existed prior to the 1938 hurricane, is, is really not the most astute way to go forward. This is more of an applicant benefit, maximizing lot count, it's not a community, it's a community detriment, and it's compromised safety, inconsistent density, and future access issues, and I believe that the detriment outweighs the benefit. So I just wanted to go on record saying that. Thank you.
Is there somebody else on, on Zoom?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to have Mr. McGuire note where he lives on the map so the board would know?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
We're fine, we're good.
Hi, are, are you an attorney?
Yes, I am.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Irma Egleton, 9 Peters Lane in West Hampton Beach, 11978.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for hearing me and allowing me to speak tonight. I just want to say I'm in strong opposition to Mr. Gaze's request, and I would ask that you deny it. I understand that there are rights of a, or a landowner to develop their land. He's actually using that map from 19, whatever it is, before I could even vote. And there's been so much that has changed in this world, our wetlands acts, the way our development was in our, my community and my street, which Mr. Gaze is not a neighbor, he's a landowner in the back. Every one of my neighbors that I've talked to, and there are many of them, oppose this. There's not one single person that supports this that I know of, and I would just strongly encourage you, the, I guess the request he's making to have zero frontage, the limited issue, I guess, in front of you tonight, I would ask that you just deny that. It's not consistent with the character of the neighborhood. We all have frontage, we have requirements, and I think the town has them for a very good reason, and I understand their variances, but I think by giving him that, there's so many problems that will come from that in creating what he wants to create back there, at least from my perspective. I share my neighbor's concerns of getting a fire truck back there or getting an emergency vehicle. I'm also concerned with the drainage in the area. Right now, in front of my house, every time it rains, there's a pool that comes up. There's on the land kind of adjacent to that on the South County Road, which is on his map and down by the Montauk Highway, that is always subject to some kind of flooding whenever it rains. I'm concerned with what the development of the land back there, which part of it is on that either adjacent to wetlands or wetlands part of it itself, on the headwaters of the Aspetuck River there. I'm concerned with how that will affect my home.
Okay.
And so I just would ask that you deny this, and I reiterated all the arguments I've made in every meeting that he's, I've attended to oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. And so that you know, water that's on a property has to stay on a property, and there has to be a proper drainage, and I'm sure planning will be looking at that, correct? As well, you know, so, and the, the town engineer is going to be looking at that.
Our engineer reviews everything.
So it's not, it's not something, you know, whatever water is created on your property stays on your property.
In, in response, the town engineer has already approved a private access common[1711.33]
In response, the town engineer has already approved a private access common driveway, sufficient and adequate for the three homes, for four homes, actually, as well as the West Hampton Beach Fire District. They have approved the fire department's access, they've located the hydrant, the houses can be served by public water and a fire hydrant within reaching distance in case there's a fire. Everybody has been through this. If the neighbors don't want houses behind under wooded property, why don't you all get together and buy it? Yeah?
All right, is there anybody else on Zoom who wishes to be heard?
There is one more.
Okay.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, are you an attorney?
I'm not.
Okay, have I sworn you in before? I don't think so.
You haven't.
Okay. Do you swear or tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name and address.
My name's Ryan Krebs, I live at 55 Peters Lane.
Okay, Ryan, you know what, we're limiting our discussion to...
Agreed, I haven't had the opportunity to participate in previous meetings, so I just wanted to voice my opinion. I appreciate everybody's time, so I'll make sure this is quick. So with respect to Mr. Gaza's request, I think there are a few major points that we should consider. First and foremost is general environmental harm to the area. I think there happens to be a lack of infrastructure, so reiterating Irma's point on some of the flooding and pooling water, that could get worse. I think there are conflicts proposed in the building use. Mr. Gaza's previously stated that this could benefit other residents from an affordable housing standpoint. On the other end, he said it could increase the value of properties, so it seems like there's some inconsistencies there with argument. I also, you know, would generally like to ask a hypothetical question or a rhetorical question of, you know, who does this benefit ultimately? So to my prior points, if we build these houses and we ruin wetland, if we ruin the woods behind all of our houses, you know, what ultimately happens to the wildlife, what happens to the environment and that area, and then what dangers does it pose to the existing homeowners if those houses are put on that land?
Well, this is all part of the SECR considerations, which the planning board is responsible for, and they will be, when is the date on that? It's January 22nd. They're going to be taking SECR action on that, and that's what they address. They address all of these, the environmental, whatever, so, and they...
They can speak to that too, right?
Right. Yeah, so, so that hopefully will be taken care of, considered by the planning board. We're here on a very limited basis, so...
Am I incorrect in assuming that, you know, should we move forward at this stage, if you were to deny this request, that it wouldn't move forward to the other approval areas?
We're not going to deal with it until the other areas come to us, come back to us.
The sequence has flipped.
That's first.
That's first. And if they, and if they have a, you know, a positive declaration and they find problems with it or whatever, then, you know, puts off us making a decision.
They're going to address the emergency vehicle access, all the...
Right, right.
All that stuff that you're addressing, they're going to address that before they make a recommendation to us.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Yeah, I know, it gets, it's complicated, and I understand it, you know, it's not always clear.
Do you have wetlands, or you don't? You do?
I have wetlands. I have the right setbacks, as most of my neighbors do not, and I have 17 feet of groundwater.
All right, okay.
We're going to deal with the wetlands part of the subdivision process.
Okay, right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Krebs.
Okay, well, yeah, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there one more person?
There's a question, I want to get out of here.
You got to come up by the mic.
I don't know why you don't want to stay.
Yeah, we're actually all very lovely people.
So is where you are on the map. I want to know, are you...
No, 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 we're not, please, please, okay, please, please, allow him to speak, and then let's move on.
I just want to know that on January 22nd, this is going to go in...
They're going, talk to Anthony.
Planning, not us.
To the planning board, I know, I know, but is that an open hearing, or is that like a meeting, or whatever?
Talk to Anthony, Anthony's the planning board. Talk to Anthony, he'll tell you everything you need to know.
All right, thank you.
I just want to know where I have to be on it.
Anthony, January 22nd, is it an open meeting?
All meetings are open, but it's not a public hearing, the public does not get to speak at our meetings. You get to speak at a public hearing.
Can they attend?
Of course they can attend, but they're not going to be allowed to speak.
Is it in here?
It's in here.
Okay.
Mr. McGuire.
All right, wait, we're going to close this.
No, 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 Joe, come on.
Push your luck, you already did it with the female attorneys, don't push over.
I am holding this open until 2:19.
Second.
All right, wait a second, what was the, what was the recommendation?
February 19, we're holding open to public hearing.
All right, we're going to adjourn this till February 19.
John's second.
Mr. Mastoni.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, thank you. Number nine on the agenda, application of Jennifer Gianotti, Jenice, 62 Kyle Road, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Act number 900-296-130.
Is there anybody on Zoom on this?
No one has their hand up.
Huh? No?
Oh, actually, I think this person doesn't have their hand up, but they're chatting.
Todd O'Connell, maybe?
Yeah, that's him.
Is this not what it says?
I don't see him.
Detached garage, great.
All right. Okay.
Okay, thank you, can you all see me there?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I've sworn you in before, right?
Yes, you have.
All right, just restate your name and address, please.
Absolutely, it's Todd O'Connell, architect, doing business at 1200 Veterans Highway, Hop Dog Field.
Okay, all right, so you've been here before, Todd, what's new?
Okay, so we were there for a detached garage in a front yard. We had some discussions about the detached garage, so I approached my client, and although it cost a little bit for her to do so, she decided that she would attach the garage to the house, which would then allow a much greater front yard setback, without having to diminish the size of the garage itself. Now, we drove around the neighborhood, I submitted two photographs of other houses that are in the immediate area of two-car garages, you know, so it meets the character of the neighborhood. It ends up being, where originally we were proposing a front yard setback of 26.45, we've now added over 10 feet more setback, so now the setback to the garage would be 37.4. In addition to that, it was suggested at the meeting that they would like to see that the garage that I would propose would stay in line or behind the adjacent building to the south, or the adjacent residence to the south, which it is. We are actually approximately three feet further from the street than where, you know, the neighboring property is. So, unfortunately, we have to do a little bit more work on the house, moving windows and things inside the house to make this happen, but the client was willing to do this, so she didn't have to negotiate the size of her garage, and she could still keep both cars in the door. So that's the main thing that's before you. And I guess, you know, I feel it's a much better application because it's giving a much more front yard setback. You know, there is, you know, precedent enabled other homes with two-car garages, specifically 18 Harvard Drive, which has a two-car garage, it's on the street corner side as well. And that's what we've changed here, so we were hoping to have your comments and see if this is, you know, a good direction.
Okay, Kevin, this is yours, do you want to start?
It is. So, we had a nice chat, made a few suggestions, you addressed them all as were the subject of the conversation, and I'm reasonably satisfied with what has been presented back to us.
It looks like, you know, it aligns itself with the house, it aligns itself with the neighbor's house, it's, you know, just a few feet off of the required setback now.
Yeah.
So I think that, yeah, it was a responsive reaction, in my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 62 Kyle Road?
No one.
All right, Kevin?
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to close the hearing on Jennifer Gianotti, is it Jenice or Jeans?
Jeans.
Jeans. At 62 Kyle Road, close the hearing with comments accepted up until 12:19 with the decision on 1:15.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Hi.
Mr. Mastoni.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
Thank you, good night, happy holidays.
Thanks to you all.
Okay, number 10 on the agenda, UNA Riverhead Realty LLC, 7 Pecanic Avenue, Riverside, Suffolk County Tax Act number 900-118-24.
Okay.
How'd you get last?
I think we were almost first last time, so I guess...
That's a punished clip.
I guess that's karma, something like that.
Yeah, that's karma, and I've sworn you in.
Yeah, good evening.
But just please restate your name.
First name is spelled A-H-M-E-R.
A-H-M-E-R.
Last name is I-L-A-H-I.
I-L-H...
A-H-I.
A-H-I, sorry.
A-L-A-H-I?
Long night. And Susanna?
Susanna Hammond and Consultants. This is a continuation from October 16th. I sent over a letter today, I don't know if anyone saw that.
We saw it tonight.
Yes.
Okay. I also have copies of a proposal from a contractor for lowering the height of the sign, so...
Oh, that I don't see.
That I don't think I submitted. I have a bunch of copies of that as well, I can hand these out.
Okay, give them to Katie.
I stapled it to the letter you already have. So, as I, I think we picked up on the main concerns that the board had at the last meeting. Primarily, the two easiest things to get rid of are the smaller signs on that free standing sign, the one that says food mart, and the one that says Lotto slash ATM. Those would be popped out, and then the inserts would be removed, the sign would be cut in height, the post would be cut in height, and so the total height would be reduced from 17 foot 8 inches to 12 foot 6 inches.
I'm sorry, I was, I was liking that, actually, so, that out loud, so, sorry. Sorry about that.
He was just thinking out loud, okay.
He's thinking, that's great, the planning department's going to love that.
See, you have an audio track for your presentation.
Anthony's had a night.
We all have.
I'm getting myself, it's past my bedtime, not quite.
Tell us about it.
It feels like it's past my bedtime. So the proposal that I passed up for pinnacle pump and tank, which was from last week, there's three things on here. One, we have to do, the building department has required that the sign be made to comply with the wind...
Oh, wind, wind, yes, that's right, yep.
Hurricane-proof, 130 mile per hour, which means that they need to do new footings, that's going to cost $5,000. And then lowering the sign and cutting off the posts to get to 12 foot 6, that's going to cost $5,000. If they were to replace the sign completely with all new supports and everything, that would cost $52,000 plus. So we really don't want to do that.
Right.
So I think this is a very happy compromise.
So it would be $10,000 total?
Correct.
Okay.
Including retrofitting it to be hurricane-proof.
Right.
And lowering it.
Right.
On the dispensers themselves, I don't know if you remember it, but it's in the pictures, there's a round, it's called a bug on the top of the dispenser, that says 76. Let me show you that picture real quick. That would be removed. So you have these pictures. The big thing, the circle at the top would be just popped off, and this is considered by the building department, a sign as well. That would be replaced with just a solid, this would be solid orange at the bottom of the dispenser, and the 76 at the top would be removed.
Okay.
I think at the last meeting, we went over all the reasons that we can't move the sign, and that it's in a pre-existing location, it's not blocking anything, so I won't reiterate any of that.
Yes, no, we all agreed, yeah.
And we also reviewed the letter that we were handed that night from Riverhead. I think that was perhaps generated as sort of a compound issue with other things happening in the immediate vicinity. Nevertheless, we felt we wanted to address their five concerns that they raised. One was about dark sky, compliant lighting. They recently, I think just this year, a couple weeks ago, they've replaced the lighting with energy-efficient, dark sky-compliant lighting on the premises.
PSCG, Long Island approved lighting, correct?
So I think that's a valid concern that's been addressed. There's fencing around the entire property as a deterrent for crime, there are surveillance cameras, which is one of the suggestions, those are already there, and I don't know if there's a way to make this pre-existing gas station from 1957 look less commercial, given its location.
Given its status as a commercial property.
I mean, and the sign is redone, that area will be re-landscaped, and I'm sure they'll do a very...
I think also removing some of the 76 things and everything else, it's definitely going to tone it down.
I think so, too. I think it's a good compromise to make it look like a nice gas station, and that's what it is. Also, there was a mention about window signs and a clear sign of light from the interior.
Right, but that was also a crime thing, as I recall, yeah.
There's no, there's no window signs.
Okay, no neon in the windows.
There's a clear line of sight.
Okay, good.
On all side where the windows are.
Okay, because I know that was a concern.
Well, it's important for your safety as well.
Of course, and as I said, I mean, I take the safety of myself and my employees, that's the utmost thing, you know, everything else comes secondary.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right, yeah.
They're probably next door, it's still for sale, right?
Oh, yeah, the one with the, yeah, at least there is.
Three pillars on it, right?
Susanna, what variances are eliminated by fixing the 76?
He owns all three buildings.
That was, you mean on the dispensers themselves?
Whatever, like I'm looking at the write-up for this, and I've crossed off the food mart and the Lotto, and I've adjusted the height, what other variances were eliminated by the local bus, or whatever you're talking about?
I don't think it was on the notice, on our application, we had requested an interpretation from the building inspector that these were signage.
Okay.
I think Anthony...
You've had a lot of illumination, things written up in the variances, is that covered by the dark skies compliance?
Well, it's a logo on the canopy.
They're asking for variances for them, so they're not covered by dark skies there? Oh, all right, okay.
So the canopy, as we said in the previous hearing, is a replacement for the previous canopy that was exactly the same, but was a previous franchise.
The canopy has always been there, at least as far as I've been there.
And that has, I'm sorry, you're right. That has planning board approval and has a certificate of compliance from 2021, I think. So all we've done is change that to 76 from the previous franchise that was there. So the canopy, I don't think it's an issue. The building department is making us come to you because it's different, but it's the same dimensions.
Same canopy.
Same canopy, it's just the facade wrap of the canopy that has changed, and that was previously illuminated as well.
Okay. So what, so what are we looking at that we need now? Like what, what variances are we approving?
There, well, there are still, we're still asking for all the same variances except for the Lotto and food mart signs, that those are being eliminated, and the variance for the height of the sign is reduced.
So you just want two points, two feet 6 inches of relief?
Correct. That is required in this district. I think if we were across the street, it would be 12 feet.
And I've spoken to the contractor, he feels this is the max that he could do, can't go any lower than that, unfortunately.
Right, by lowering it five feet, we're actually only going to be about a foot off the ground at the bottom, and they need that for the electrical conduit. So we can't, can't put it on the ground, it won't be visible, and it won't, won't work.
What about the internal illumination?
Of the sign?
Yeah, something LED?
Oh, the, the gas prices are LED.
Okay, and those stay on all the time?
Those stay on all the time.
Okay.
Those are changed automatically through an app, as opposed to the old-fashioned ones that were changed.
They have to go manually on and change them.
Right.
Is it, you're open 24 hours?
Yes, we are, and those are very low wattage compared to if, the prior, where you actually have a fluorescent bulb where there are a lot of light going out there, I believe it was in the package where it shows the wattage, it's very low wattage with the LEDs, so...
They're more energy efficient, it's safer for the operator, there was actually an incident where...
Yeah, they open a ladder, change them.
Ended up... Ended up in the hospital.
Right, okay.
Far surgeries later, so.
So, you want the internally illuminated logo on the canopy signs?
Yes.
I'm fine with it. I know that circle very well. Then internally illuminated-
The stipulation being that the LED-
Stays.
Stays, right.
We're asking that all the illumination that's currently there stay.
Okay.
And that requires a variance for the LED, for the sign being illuminated.
So, keep all current illumination, allow LED price sign. And then we've removed Lotto and Food Mart.
We've lowered it.
And you've lowered it, okay.
We've lowered it five feet.
And you're gonna make it hurricane-proof, required? Okay. And you're taking off the seventy-six stuff?
Off the dispensers.
Off the pumps, yeah.
They're called bugs.
Okay, so essentially, it looks like all the illuminations stay.
You didn't request that.
They were on my application.
Oh, okay.
In the last section of the application, under interpretation from the building inspector. If you look at the actual original application, it may have been missed when the, um, the notice was written up because it's, you know, there's a blank page between there because we're not asking for a use variance.
Okay, so you're withdrawing the request for the bugs and for the pump signs?
Correct.
Okay. Good, this is nice.
All right, anybody on the-
He's happy.
Anybody else on the board that wishes to make a comment? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application, Seventh Conic Avenue?
No one.
Okay, Robert.
Hold on a second. Go ahead, Suzanne.
I was just gonna say that this has been sent for a referral to the planning board, and it's on the agenda Tuesday.
Oh, Thursday, next Thursday.
Next Thursday. Why did it say Tuesday? So, it's on for Thursday.
That's, you know-
I don't know what they're gonna do. I mean, it's a wild card.
I've really taken the-
Be careful, he's been yelling at people tonight.
You know, listen, this is Claire's project, so I'm not gonna speak for anybody, but it is going before the planning board. What would you, I mean-
Katie, what would we normally do?
What would you normally do?
Can we approve, can we, can we make a decision without planning board having acted yet?
Well, no, it's a referral report.
Yeah.
The worst case, the worst thing that's gonna happen, which probably will happen, is that the planning board will say, "The sign should comply." That's typically what they say with signs. I mean, that's typically what they say.
And then it's back to us.
It's back to you no matter what. You can, listen, you can, if you're okay with this, you can close it, knowing that they may say they hate all of the signs. They may say that they hate all of the signs, and then you would make Suzanne come back and have this conversation that you're having right now. So, it's, we don't act without it. We're gonna get a referral report. It's just whether or not you wanna discuss the referral report with the applicant or whether you're satisfied with the modifications that have been made.
I think written subs is fine. I'm satisfied.
Yeah, I think written subs are fine, too.
Helen?
I'm not sure on that. I mean, because if you're saying that the planning board is gonna have, you know, may have some issues with this, you know, just getting the referral letter back may not be enough. We may have to reopen it. We may have to hear it at that point.
I guess, Suzanne, I just wanna understand what new would we discuss?
Well, they may say you've gotta do X, Y, and Z, which may affect the variance.
Well, no, no, no.
They're gonna be, they wouldn't say do X, Y. I mean, at the best, they would say, planning board finds, you know, would recommend that they do X, Y, and Z.
And then it's up to us to decide whether or not we do it.
Then it would be completely on you, whether or not you agree or don't.
They're just telling us what their thoughts are. They're not telling us what we have to do.
All right, so you feel comfortable opposing the hearing and-
We know exactly what the signs are gonna be. It's gonna be the same presentation for them, right?
Unless there's something that comes out that's like so, like unbelievable.
Suzanne's gonna be at the meeting next week, I'm assuming, paying attention and everything.
Now that I know it's Thursday, I'll be there.
That's true. We're glad we'll see you.
They're never on Tuesday.
Hold it open, written submissions until December nineteenth with a decision on January fifteenth.
Second, all right, so, let me just get that down. So, written to December nineteenth with a decision, January fifteenth. Okay, Mr. Mastonia?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Do you guys have a Happy New Year?
Thank you.
Have a good one.
See ya, Anthony.
Maybe we have to. Okay, are we up to decisions?
Yes, we are.
Okay, let's see, who's first? Helen, who would like to read Helen's?
I'm the one that has them, Susan.
I will read Helen's, okay. I have a decision in L K E South Beach, LLC Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash one seven seven dash four dash twenty. This application is for property located at three fifty-two Saint Andrews Road West in Hickok Hills. Applicant seeks a variance for a zero-foot road frontage on an existing lot that will take access over easements to Saint Andrews Road West. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code Section three thirty-eighty-two lot width for a road frontage of zero feet, where forty feet is required for a proposed one-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot, as shown on the survey prepared by Jeffrey W. Haderer, LS Twin Forks Land Surveying, last revised February fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Grant to the foregoing is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia?
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I have another Helen decision. It's TBD South Beach LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash one seventy-seven dash four dash twenty-one. This application is for property located at three fifty Saint Andrews Road West in Hickok Hills. Applicant seeks a variance for a zero-foot road frontage on a pre-existing lot that will take access, access over easements to Saint Andrews Road West. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code Section three thirty-eighty-two lot width for a road frontage of zero feet, where forty feet is required for a proposed one-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot, as shown on the survey prepared by Jeffrey W. Haderer, LS Twin Forks Land Surveying, last revised September twenty-fifth, two thousand, two thousand twenty. Grant to the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia?
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, Bob, you're next.
Okay, we are on to decision. Okay, not what we do.
What we do, LLC Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred one fifty-eight dash one dash twenty-nine. This application is for property located at four seventy-one County Road Thirty-nine, Tuckahoe. Applicant seeks variances for a sign in a pre-existing location for a non-medical cannabis dispensary. With screening implemented at the recommendation of the planning board, this application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of Town Code to legalize a freestanding dual pole sign constructed without the benefit of building permit on a non-conforming lot, Town Code three thirty-one sixty-two dash two, two-six M seven, non-medical cannabis dispensary. Sign is to allow the sign to be located one hundred eighty-seven point one feet from the school grounds properly located on the northwest side and two hundred thirty-eight point seven feet from the school grounds properly located on the north side, where a minimum distance of five hundred feet is required, respectively, Town Code three thirty dash two oh five B, one and two, general provisions, freestanding signs, including pole mining signs, to allow the sign to be located on a property with a building located thirty-one point nine feet from the front property line, where the entire building setback show be forty feet or more from the property line. Two, to allow the sign to be located twelve point seven feet from the front property line, where a minimum setback of twenty feet from all property lines is required. All is shown in the site plan prepared by Sean Leonard, Registered Architect, last revised October twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and signed plan stamped by G. Murdock, professional engineer dated September fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and signed sketch prepared by Sean Leonard, dated October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The grant of relief is subject to such other conditions as permit applicant has therefore acquired or may otherwise be necessary, including installation and maintenance of any screening, vegetative and/or fencing, as may be required by the planning board. And two, illumination of the sign must comply with the Town Code.
Second.
Mr. Mastonia?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
No.
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, next is Julie.
Susan Rogers Grun, Legacy Trust et al., Suffolk County Town Map nine hundred twenty-two dash one dash sixteen. This application is for property located at four fifty-five Middle Line Highway, Neuyak. Applicant requests relief to construct a proposed house and pool on a shallow, non-conforming lot. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants the following relief from Town Code Section three thirty-six, general regulations that references, and Section three thirty-eleven, residence district tables of dimensional regulations for, one, a principal front yard setback of fifty feet, where one hundred feet is required for a proposed one-family dwelling, and two, an accessory distance from front line, front lot line setback of fifty-seven point one, where one hundred and ten feet is required for a proposed pool, as shown on the survey prepared by Tamara L. Stillman, LS of L K M A, dated July twenty twenty-five, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by Jeffrey Sands, R.A., dated June thirty, twenty twenty-five, and July one, twenty twenty-five. The grant to the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicants have already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia?
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye. Okay, I have a decision in the application of Danelis Realty Two LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash one thirteen dash one dash eight. This application is for property located at ten Schwank's Road Water Mill. Applicant requests relief to legalize the conversion of an accessory building into an accessory apartment. While this board does not condone construction done without permits, it does find that the application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief in the following provisions of the Town Code to legalize an accessory apartment constructed in a detached building without the benefit of a building permit. One, Town Code Section three thirty-eleven point two F special standards for the dwelling, a front yard setback of two, twenty-five point two feet, where a minimum of fifty-six feet is required, seventy percent of the required eighty feet. For the accessory building, apartment, an accessory side yard setback of seven point four feet, where a minimum of twenty-one feet is required, seventy percent of the required thirty feet. An accessory rear yard setback of five point two feet, where a minimum of twenty-one feet is required. For the detached garage, an accessory side yard setback of zero feet, where a minimum of twenty-one feet is required, seventy percent of the required thirty feet. And to allow an accessory apartment to be located on a property with a lot area of twenty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-four square feet, where a minimum of sixty-four thousand square feet is required, eighty percent of the required eighty thousand square feet. All is shown on the survey prepared by Jeffrey W. Haderer, LS, last revised November seventh, two thousand twenty-five, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by Cass Calder Smith, R.A., issued January tenth, two thousand twenty-four. The grant to the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including that one. The applicant and all successors and interests will install and maintain vegetative screening of the accessory apartment, and two, all items shall be removed from the town right of way prior to the issuance of any certificate for the accessory apartment.
Second, Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia?
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Kevin, you're up.
I move to approve the application of Charles Calisa and Mary Beth Costa, Calisa Tax Map number nine hundred five dash five dash fifty-three. This application is for property located at twenty-nine Poplar Street, Neuyak. Applicant requests variances for a proposed one-story addition and basement bilco door on a non-conforming lot that is well-screened. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. One, for a proposed one-story addition, Town Code Section three thirty dash one fifteen C, continuance for a rear yard setback of twenty-eight point seven feet, where twenty-nine point four is existing, a minimum side yard setback of nine and a half feet, where ten feet is existing, and a total yard, total side yards of twenty-three feet, where twenty-three point five is existing. And two, for a basement bulkhead door, commonly known as a bilco door, Town Code Section three thirty-eighty-three C yards, to allow a basement bulkhead door to be located three point three feet from the north side of a lot line, where five feet is required, and relief from the screening requirement for the adjacent property to the north, as shown on the proposed site plan prepared by Francesco Di Domenico, licensed survey, last surveyed October one, two thousand twenty-five, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by Fred Smith, Registered Architect, dated July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. The grant of the, twenty twenty-five, the grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including the maintenance of all vegetative screening of the proposed bilco door.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, I have an application, a decision in the application of Andrew Fedor, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash five dash three dash twenty-one. On March twenty, two thousand twenty-five, by decision number D zero two five zero two eight, this board granted a sky plane encroachment in the amount of two thousand three hundred thirty-five cubic feet for a new one-family dwelling and of two hundred and fifty cubic feet for a proposed two-story detached garage. By letter dated September twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, agent for the applicant, Matt Ivans, asked the decision be modified because the pyramid calculation mistakenly did not take into account compliance with the limit of moderation, moderate wave action requirements on this lot, which is additionally burdened by wetlands and located in a flood zone. Therefore, decision number D zero two five zero two eight is hereby amended to grant relief from Town Code Section three thirty-eighty-four D Pyramid Law for a total sky plane encroachment of three thousand five hundred ninety-seven cubic feet for a new one-family residence, as shown on the floor plans, elevations, and pyramid diagram prepared by David H. Sherwood, R.A., last dated September sixth, two thousand twenty-five. All other provisions and conditions of D zero two five zero two eight remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Ms. Burgess?
No.
Chair votes aye. Okay, Kevin, you're up.
Kevin, you're up, last one.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I'm up. Okay, I move to adopt the application of Anthony and Rosemary Adino, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash three forty-five dash one dash two point one. This application, this is for property located at fourteen Port Elizabeth Drive, Hampton Bay. Applicants request variances for decks and in addition to a dwelling on an undersized lot burdened by wetlands. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a proposed wraparound side and rear addition and rear covered porch, Town Code Section three thirty-six, general regulations that references, Town Code Section three thirty-eleven, residence district tables of dimensional regulations, for a principal rear yard setback of fifty-six point eight feet, where seventy is required, and a principal minimum side yard setback of twelve point seven feet, where twenty feet is required, and a principal side yard, I'm sorry, and a principal total side yard of thirty-two point nine feet, where forty is required. And two, for a proposed deck on the south side, relief from the Town Code Section three thirty-seven six D, placement of accessory building structures in all other districts, and three thirty-eighty-three C yards, to allow the deck to be located within the required minimum and total side yards for principal buildings, as shown on the survey prepared by David H. Fox, last dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, and the floor plans prepared by John David Rose, last dated, last dated October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. The grant to the foregoing relief is subject-